Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. It is 7:01 PM. We are going to commence the City Council meeting for the city of Edina shortly on a virtual basis. But before we call the meeting to order, I want to let everyone know that we're doing all of this electronically to comply with the Governor's Stay Safe Minnesota order and to ensure the safety of all the residents who would otherwise be participating live and also our staff. All members of the City Council, staff and presenters are participating from their homes at their offices. But before we begin, I'd like to cover a few things for those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. As I think all of you know by now, the city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters even in this virtual world, on this virtual platform. We've been collecting public input through our Council Correspondence Web Form, through voicemail, and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. All of those comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of the meeting. You don't need to submit the same feedback in another way. All of those communications will be considered equally and thoughtfully by the council as we go about making the decisions we will be making this evening. So tonight, there are no public hearings. There's only one time to call in, and that's during Community Comment, that portion of the agenda. And with respect to Community Comment, recall that you can speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. So if you want to call in for a Community Comment, you might want to get queued up. The number is 800-374-0221, 800-374-0221. And the conference ID number is 279-8766, 279-8766. When you get in the queue, you'll be given three minutes to speak. Director Benarot will bring you into the council, and City Manager Neil will time your speaking, and he'll let you know if you go over the three-minute mark. And if you've already provided communications with the council, you don't have to call in tonight unless there's something that you forgot to mention in your other presentations. New comments or information are gladly received in the Community Comment portion of the agenda. But again, a reminder, it can't be anything that's on the agenda this evening. So we got about, as I mentioned earlier, people participating from different places. We're using different types of software. We got about 20 people working on this production. We hope there won't be any issues, but if there are, we'll get them corrected as quickly as we can. And having said that, I will now call the virtual meeting of the Edina City Council to order. Roll call, please. Ms. Tim?
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brendel?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we will have an American flag on the screen as we go through the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing we have on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there anyone on the council or Manager Neil, any modifications to the form of meeting agenda that's been provided?
No modifications from staff, Your Honor.
All right. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to modify the agenda in any form or fashion? All right, hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Some move.
Member Fisher moved.
Second.
Seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Tim, with respect to approval of the meeting agenda.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The meeting agenda as published is approved. Next is Community Comment. So now we're going to hear from residents who would like to speak to the council about something that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Again, a reminder, 800-374-0221 is the call-in number. Conference ID is 279-8766, 279-8766. An operator will ask your name and street address and put you in the queue to speak. Don't forget to press star one. Director Benarot will bring you into the council, and you'll have three minutes to speak, and Manager Neil will let you know if you are over the three-minute mark. So Director Benarot, do we have anybody for Community Comment this evening?
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and members of the council. Unfortunately, at this time, I do not have anyone on the call. Because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I would recommend that we wait a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows that it's 7:07, so I will let you know when I have a caller or when we have hit 7:08, whichever comes first.
Thank you.
7:08, and I don't have any callers, so I think you can move forward with the agenda.
All right, thank you, Director Benarot. Next on the agenda would be the city manager's response to community comments that were made two weeks ago. So Manager Neil, from that meeting on the 1st of December, were there any citizen comments you needed to respond to? I believe there were.
Yes, Your Honor, there was one. We had one community comment that evening, and it was, it was an interesting community comment, if you'll remember, because it was a community comment that actually was relevant to a public hearing we were going to have later that night. The question was about our permitting fees and building permit fees and whether or not we are increasing them at an appropriate rate for 2021. That was the question. And I think the implication of the question, or the root of the question, was that the person didn't think we were. So during the public hearing, I explained that we have to have a connection, a nexus, between what our costs are to provide a service and what we charge for that service with our user fee system. And we have to be very careful about that, particularly in the building permit world. We have a lot of eyes on us in terms of making sure that we don't increase them too high, but we also don't want them too low. And we have to go through any process that is required of us by the state to justify our building permitting costs and building permit user fees. And so there is this justification process that we have to do every year, and I believe that Mr. Brown requested to see that information. We'll be happy to provide him that information from the previous, from previous year, or 2020, earlier this year. We'll be doing it again in 2021 in either the first or second quarter, if I recall right. And so that was the answer to that question.
All right, good, thank you. Prompt any inquiry from any council members? Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. We've got quite a few items on the consent agenda this evening. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as shown in the main agenda?
Some move.
Member Brendel moves. Was that Member Fisher? Yeah, seconds. All right, any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, please, with respect to adoption of the consent agenda, Ms. Tim?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The consent agenda items are approved in a single motion. There was one that, you know, we usually recognize people that are donating to the city, and we need a four-fist vote for that, which we did get. There were a couple of real significant donations to the city from the Edina Crime Prevention Fund. Both Member Staunton and Member Brendel serve on that Crime Prevention Fund, and they involved close to, no, I think it was almost $140,000. So I don't know if either Member Brendel or Member Staunton would want to comment on that donation from the crime fund?
Kevin, would you like to?
Not necessary, but...
I'll leave it to you, Mary.
Okay, well, it is significant. So there was a special fundraiser held to raise funds to replace the Bearcat, which is the armored vehicle. And so it was a successful fundraiser, and so that's the $132,500 is to pay for the new armored vehicle. The old one was traded in or sold or something, but anyway. And then a camera system for that new vehicle is the additional $5,000. But the special fundraiser, the donors are anonymous, but it's a huge thank you to the community because that's really where those funds came from, as donations to the crime fund for the purpose of replacing the Bearcat.
All right, good, thank you, Member Brendel. Next, we'll move on to the heart of the meeting this evening. We don't have any public hearings. We're going to move on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter we have there this evening involves the sale of some general obligation refunding bonds, and that's always an interesting exercise. And we've got City Manager Scott Neal to introduce that topic, and I think Nick Anhut, our senior municipal advisor at Ellers Public Finance Advisors, is with us this evening as well to make the presentation around that refunding. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. What we're asking the council to do tonight is to approve the sale of just a little bit over $3 million of general obligation refunding, or you could think of them as a refinancing bond issue tonight. We have a very dedicated finance department and a really wonderful financial consulting partner in Ellers that really examines our debt obligations on a regular basis. And when they can identify opportunities for us to refinance existing, it often brings a cost savings to us. And that cost savings to us is debt payments or interest rate payments that allow us to not spend as much on debt service. And we translate that into our tax rate and our tax levy going forward. So it's good that they do this. We appreciate their efforts. And Nick Anhut is here tonight to represent Ellers and to tell us a little bit about the bond sale and what a great deal we got, I'm sure.
All right, thank you, Manager Neil. Mr. Anhut, welcome. Look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates. Happy to be here before you all. And I am here with some good news regarding the refinancing that Manager Neil just discussed. I do have a brief slide presentation that I will go over. The bonds that we are looking to refinance were originally issued in 2012. They were issued for various utility system and street surface improvement projects that the city undertook at that time, and they were able to finance those at a cost of about 3% interest. There are balances outstanding of about 1.5, just under $1.6 million that are payable from special assessments related to the aforementioned projects with eight years remaining, and also an additional $1.4 million outstanding as the existing balance for the utility portions of those projects, with only two years remaining on the structured repayment for that component. With the council's guidance, we moved ahead to submit an RFP out to the marketplace, a request for proposals for various financial institutions to purchase these bonds to refinance and lower the city's interest costs. And I'm here to present those results. We did receive five proposals from various financial institutions, as listed on the slide, with the lowest rate proposed from Capital One Public Funding, their investment banking arm for the large organization, at a rate of 1.09%. That's the all-in cost to refinance the entire amount of the assessment and utility portions I mentioned on the last slide. Bids came in as well from JP Mortgage Chase Bank at 115, US Bank at 1.2, Old National Bank at 1.49, and Bremer Bank at 1.78%. If we look at the comparison from the low to the high bid, the cumulative interest cost differential between that 1.09% and the 1.78 proposed from Bremer Bank is about a $61,000 swing in difference in interest costs. With the low bid from Capital One at 1.09%, we project that the final results of the sale will accrue $156,914 in net savings to the city of Edina, broken between the two different components payable from assessments and utilities. The large majority of that, since it is being paid off over an eight-year term, it will accrue to the portion of the bonds paid from the assessments, about $128,000 of that, or $16,000 per year. And then as far as the utility component, about $28,000 in savings, roughly $14,000 per year, lowering your costs to implement those utility systems and able to engage in other projects funded from those revenue sources. With that said, subject to questions from the council, there is a resolution included in your packet. It has been updated to reflect the bid proposal from Capital One, awarding the sale and locking in the form of details provided for the payment of general obligation refunding bond series 2020B. This resolution will award the purchase of the bonds to Capital One Public Funding at the 1.09% fixed interest rate that they proposed, and it will coordinate for a closing to be scheduled on December 30th. That's when they will wire the funds into the city so that it can pay off the 2012 bonds, and then you'll repay or replace the future payments at this lower 1.09% rate. So subject to any questions at the council, we do certainly recommend that you do move forward. We think this is a good opportunity for the city and certainly will lower your costs going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anhut. Any questions for Mr. Anhut? Member Brendel?
Yes, I really don't have a question, but a thank you. I remember when we, in my time on the council, this being my last meeting, I'm a little bit reflective. I remember the first time this, a refunding, refinancing opportunity was brought before us, and I'm looking at it going, oh, this is how this works, not being a high finance person. But when I really think about it, thank you for paying attention to this, Nick, and prior to you, Mark, Mark, I can't remember his last name. He's gonna, I'm embarrassed.
Ruff.
Mark Ruff, thank you. But thank you for paying attention to this. It's important to us that we get the work done that we need to get done and that we handle our finances responsibly. So you are a very needed and appreciated partner in this. Thank you very much.
Member Staunton, did you have a question or comment?
No, nothing for me.
Okay, your screen lit up there momentarily at the same time Member Brendel was asking to speak, and I thought, well, maybe you had something you wanted to say. Any other council member wish to comment? Member Fisher or Member Anderson?
Yes, sir, thank you. You know, I just would parallel Member Brendel's comments, a nifty piece of work, Mr. Anhut, thank you.
All right, thanks, Member.
Always a pleasure.
All right, so if we want to take advantage of this $156,914 in net savings on bond reissuance, we need to pass a resolution. It'd be Resolution 2020-131, which would authorize the issuance, award the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment of $3,015,000 for the general obligation refunding bond series 2020B, as I say, embodied in Resolution 2020-131. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-131?
Some move.
Member Anderson moves?
Second.
Member Brendel, seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Tim, with respect to the motion as stated?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The motion passes. The Resolution 2020-131 is approved, awarding the sale of $3,015,000 of the general obligation refunding bond series B. And again, Mr. Anhut, thank you, and staff as well. I know that our finance department was right on top of this as well, so thanks very much.
Yeah, thanks, team.
Thanks.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Yeah, same to you, Mr. Anhut. Have a great holiday. Next, we're going to move on to one of our proposed roadway reconstruction projects, and this is the same sequence that we heard them on December 1st. And so first, we're going to take the Creek Knoll A and B Neighborhood roadway reconstruction project as proposed, embodied in improvement BA 459. That involves not only a roadway reconstruction, but a proposed sidewalk in the two-block stretch along Beard Avenue. And as the conversation goes on, Mr. Disler, I think the Assistant City Engineer has this matter, we may want to think about having the sidewalk as a separate conversation. But let's start out, Mr. Disler, go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. You're with me one moment here. Get it loaded up. Okay, Mayor and council, thank you again for the opportunity to briefly present this evening. We're going to recap the public hearing input received, provide engineering's recommendations. We'll kind of recap the proposed sidewalk on Beard Avenue, and we'll answer your questions related to proposed roadway reconstruction improvements for Creek Knoll A and B Neighborhood. At the conclusion of the agenda item, the council will vote whether or not to proceed with the project and the sidewalk. A reminder, Creek Knoll A and B Neighborhood is bordered on the west by France Avenue and on the north by West 54th Street. On Monday, December 7th, Engineering presented the engineering study, and the council opened the public hearing. The city provided residents the opportunity to provide testimony live during the December 7th public hearing. Seventeen residents called in and did provide that testimony. The city also provided residents an additional opportunity to provide testimony using the Better Together Edina website until noon on December 9th. Through the Better Together Edina website, we received 12 comments, which were included in your council packet. The Better Together Edina testimony was primarily related to support for the petition against the Beard Avenue sidewalk. Other testimony included requests for minimizing roadway and stormwater impacts at Beard Court. There's a couple of concerns over the project timing in the midst of the pandemic, and there's also a comment in support of the proposed Beard Avenue sidewalk. Well, let's take a look at the proposed sidewalk one more time, starting south of Fuller Street and Abbott Place along Beard Avenue. The roadway is proposed at 24 feet wide per the Living Streets Plan. Light gray is the asphalt pavement. The darker gray is the concrete curb and gutter. The lime green color is the proposed five-foot grass boulevard, and the dark gray color is the five-foot concrete sidewalk. We do have a fence in the city right-of-way, some landscaping in the right-of-way. We've also got some utility poles adjacent to the proposed sidewalk. Couple of those may have to be relocated, which that does occur on many of these street reconstruction projects, not a major concern. The dashed black line is the existing edge of asphalt pavement. This segment of roadway has a little bit of a variable width. There is no concrete curb and gutter on this stretch as well. The schematic design shows the widening of the proposed street and sidewalk combination of approximately 4.2 feet on either side of the existing edge of pavement. And a retaining wall would be necessary on the west side of the street, adjacent to the sidewalk. As Director Milner discussed at the public hearing on December 7th, potential fence along that retaining wall for safety reasons, there's likely going to be one tree removal in this location as well. Moving on to the segment north of Fuller Street and Abbott Place, again, we've got the 24-foot street, five-foot grass boulevard, and five-foot concrete walk, another fence in the right-of-way, some landscaping, a couple utility poles as well in the city right-of-way. The dual black dashed lines depict the existing concrete curb and gutter. The schematic design shows widening of the proposed street and sidewalk combination of approximately 1 and 1/2 feet on each side of the existing concrete curb and gutter. Just of note, too, we've got a home on the southwest corner of Beard and West 54th Street. That's the existing home structure face is very close to the existing right-of-way line. In this instance, the schematic design, which is not final, of course, roughly a dimension of about 14.4 feet from the backside of the sidewalk to that home structure face. We also heard some questions and concerns from residents as well as council about snow removal in relation to sidewalks. This five-foot grass boulevard, as shown in the lime green, is very important for snow storage. For reference, a two-to-three-foot boulevard will obviously have less room for snow if a narrower boulevard is present. Once the snow piles up three feet high or so after multiple snow plowing events in the boulevard, that next snowfall after a plow can topple over that snow in the boulevard onto the concrete sidewalk for residents to clear, for resident-maintained sidewalks. For example, the morning side neighborhood has boulevards three feet or less, and snow can topple over onto the sidewalk after numerous snow events. Have heard some complaints about roadway snow plowing, tipping over snow onto the sidewalk. For reference, if a sidewalk is placed on the back of curb with no boulevard, snow would be plowed, roadway snow would be plowed onto the sidewalk for residents to clear. So therefore, we do recommend that five-foot boulevards... Therefore, we do recommend that five-foot boulevards is very important for snow storage. Uh, also, corner lots can generate more snow than others, um, it can be variable. It generally, when a snowplow slows down, uh, like when it's rounding corners and gaining speed after turning a corner, it can cast more snow off the plow. So generally, you know, corner, corner lots can experience a little bit more snow in boulevards. Uh, of course, there is added sidewalk responsibility for adjacent homeowners for snow removal. Um, this proposed sidewalk wouldn't be the first resident-maintained sidewalk in Edina, and there are, are other walks proposed and feature street reconstruction areas. Uh, one more comment about snow plowing, there is a question about snow plowing between cities of Edina and Minneapolis on West Fifty-fourth Street and some of the Minneapolis snow ending up, uh, on the, uh, Edina side of the street and in Edina boulevards. Um, after some discussions with Public Works Department, uh, what I heard was that Public Works plows the Edina side on the south half of West Fifty-fourth Street. Uh, prior to Minneapolis plowing the north side virtually every time. Uh, therefore, Public Works has never heard any complaints that after Edina's done snow plowing on the south side of Fifty-fourth, that Minneapolis is plowing snow on the north side of the street uh, over to the south side and, and depositing it in Edina boulevards, so. Uh, no complaints to their knowledge about that occurring. Uh, as a reminder, uh, the pedestrian and bicycle master plan guiding principles, once again, uh, I won't go through this again, but those are summarized here. Uh, in conclusion, uh, staff believes the project is feasible, cost-effective, and necessary to improve the public infrastructure. Staff does recommend the Beard Avenue sidewalk be installed with the project. Uh, it does require at least three out of five council votes in favor to pass a sidewalk. Staff also recommends the council approve Resolution number two thousand twenty dash one twenty-nine, authorizing the Creek Noel A and B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project. Uh, for reference, uh, please recall the estimated assessment amount is fifteen thousand three hundred dollars per residential equivalent unit. And also recall that staff-initiated projects require a minimum of four out of five council votes in favor to pass. Well, that concludes the presentation. Thank you for the time, and I'm available for questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Disler. Um, I'm sure there'll be some. Um, questions from council members about the proposed project? We call the public hearing closed on December ninth, I believe it was, at noon, and so now we're in that discussion phase and, and trying to think this project through. Uh, from a background standpoint, it seemed to me that I recall that, uh, that the neighborhood that itself asked to be accelerated with respect to the project. But that's, that's really a, a non-issue. I think maybe one of the issues might be the street width, with or without the sidewalk, and then, of course, the discussion about two blocks worth of sidewalk on the west side of the street, and I expect that's gonna generate some conversation amongst, uh, uh, our, my colleagues and me. So, anybody care to lead off with some initial inquiries or questions, uh, thoughts? Member Staunton?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Disler, um, if you could pull up the, um, the graphic you had of the south end of the project where the Beard Court location is? So, on the, on the top end, I see where the sidewalk is as it approaches Fifty-Fifth Street. What if anything happens to the sidewalk on the south end of Fifty-Fifth Street into Beard Court? I know we had some commentary during the public hearing about the sidewalk continuing there, and I, I wonder if you can just update us on what this shows?
Yep, yep, very good, uh, good question, Member Staunton. So, again, proposed sidewalk on the west side. Uh, there is an existing, um, asphalt path that leads to a, uh, pedestrian bridge over Minnehaha Creek, which leads south to the, uh, Chowin Park neighborhood. Uh, we would propose just to, to continue that, that, uh, proposed sidewalk path around the west side of that cul-de-sac and, and link it up with this, uh, asphalt path to the pedestrian bridge. Um, there are some, uh, if you can follow my cursor, the existing edge of pavement is this black dashed line here. Um, this, uh, cul-de-sac is, is a, a draft at this point, uh, nothing final. Um, it does show an, an enlarging of this cul-de-sac and some, uh, likely tree removals in this area. Um, we are proposing to review this proposed cul-de-sac, uh, geometry with our Public Works Department for efficiency of, uh, street maintenance and plowing as well as, uh, Fire Department. Uh, so adjustments could be made. Uh, following discussions with those, uh, Public Works and, and Fire. Uh, but if you, uh, recall, too, there's also quite a bit of, uh, uh, drainage concerns in this area at Beard Court. Um, so, um, we are gonna be proposing some storm sewer in this, in this area as well, so. Likely, regardless of this, um, cul-de-sac geometry, likely some, some loss of trees and some replacement of trees uh, due to utility improvements proposed in this, uh, city right away in here.
Is Beard Court as it's currently configured plowed by the city?
It is.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Disler, I, I know that you can't go, um, any further here on Beard Court. I spent, uh, part of an afternoon, uh, last week over here. I kind of parked right on that cul-de-sac and, um, watched, observed, waited for traffic. There's a lot of foot traffic, you know, uh, in and over the bridge, went up and down there a couple times. Um, one of the things that I noticed is, and I'm just wondering, we don't have, I, I saw no reference to the bridge itself um, in the project. Is that our bridge, or is the, is the watershed have something to do with that bridge, or?
Uh, good question, Member Anderson. It, it is owned by the city. It, it essentially under the, uh, umbrella of the Parks and Rec Department uh, for, for, for maintenance of that, uh, that area.
Okay. I, I, you know, observation is, there's some, there's some treads out on the bridge itself, there's some plywood scabbed in there here and there. Looks a little rough. I just, I think that's something to keep an eye on and consider touching up this spring. Uh, uh, but a lot of foot traffic in and over there and through the cul-de-sac, so thank you for that, uh, for that answer.
Yep, if I could add, Member Anderson, too, we did some pedestrian counts over the summer, uh, we had a count of, uh, four hundred and twenty-two pedestrians in a, in a day between Fifty-Fifth and Fifty-fourth Street in this area.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Um, so, when I was over there, uh, in a, another observation about Beard Court, kind of picking up where Member Staunton was speaking, um, as I recall, Beard Court is sloped pretty drastically toward the creek. Um, what will, uh, will the, how will the, um, reconstructed cul-de-sac um, be sloped and, um, is that part of the stormwater drainage that you're gonna, that, that you're gonna put in?
Yep. Good question, Member Brindle. So, uh, yep, so full curb and gutter in the proposed sidewalk. There are some drainage issues today in this cul-de-sac with the, uh, garages as well on the east side of this Beard Court, so we are looking at potential options to try to kind of shift the drainage westerly a little bit. Uh, we'll probably end up adding a, a catch basin somewhere on, on the south end of the cul-de-sac as well. Um, and then outletting that storm into a storm sewer pipe. There'll probably be, uh, uh, you know, an emergency overflow uh, as well here at the, uh, south end of, of Beard Court for really large, uh, stormwater events, so it doesn't get kind of trapped in this, uh, in this cul-de-sac with the new, uh, barrier-style curb and gutter. Uh, so, um, did I, did I answer your question, Member Brindle, or?
Yes, I, and, uh, that, that was, the next thing I was gonna talk about is the, uh, the, the homes that are to the east off of Beard Court. Uh, where, um, where the water just naturally flows because of how Beard Court is currently sloped. So, that is gonna be important to, uh, mitigate in, uh, in this reconstruction. Um, my other question has to do with the retaining walls along the sidewalk portion and the, um, and the fence for safety purposes that, uh, was talked about. I would like to propose that when, when the council considers the the resolution to put a condition in, um, in that resolution that requires a fence. Anywhere there's a retaining wall along that sidewalk, to put a fence there. Um, just because we have one person today that needs a fence to protect them from, uh, that sheer drop-off doesn't mean in the future there wouldn't be other children that are going to need that protection as well, so. Uh, so I think, uh, I would wanna see that fence put in as a requirement uh, in this resolution.
Member Brindle, if, uh, someone had retaining wall in front of their house but didn't want the fence, you wouldn't, you wouldn't mandate that, your, your, would you?
No, uh, no, if they said, I really don't want the fence. Um, however, um, I'm, I'm really hoping that the family that really does need the fence wants it.
I think they did express that, uh, the Wertz family at, I think, Thirty-five oh one Fuller.
Right.
Express that. So, your, your notion is that if people that are, that have, uh, that steep drop-off like the Wertz's, if they want fence, they should have the option of having that be installed as part of the project?
I guess I would include the fence as part of the project with the opportunity for a neighbor to opt out.
Yeah, either, okay. Yep, alright, um. Member Fisher, any questions?
Yeah, I have a, a few. Mr. Disler, the, so the image we're looking at right now closer to the creek feels like it's, um, encroaching more than the existing street does, and that as you go to the right in this diagram, it's less, it's more in line with the existing street. Can you give me a rough idea in this diagram how far to the west this street is encroaching beyond where the old street did, or where the existing street is, does?
Yep. Good question, Member Fisher. So this area, again, if you follow my cursor here, is the existing edge of, edge of roadway. Uh, this is roughly somewhere in, in the neighborhood of twelve, twelve feet or so, plus or minus in this area. Uh, probably, you know, thirty feet longitudinally this way.
Uh, yeah, I'm more concerned over by, uh, like thirty-five hundred and thirty-five, you know, the, the uh, the comparison in, in people's front of their property.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah. Uh, so this area here, roughly, uh, four, four and a half feet in this area from the existing edge of the roadway to the back of the curb in this area. And I, I don't have a dimension to the, to the home from the back of the sidewalk in this vicinity, but I would venture to guess it's, you know, twenty feet minimum.
And so the only, you've already realigned, I mean, sketch-wise, realigned the road to the east a little bit to make up the difference. And then the only other thing we could do is make a smaller boulevard, and that's what you were talking about, you know, we get the problem of snow on the sidewalk ultimately. What's, what's been your experience? You know, it's interesting, we, when we're building out these sidewalks, we end up picking one side of the street. And it's a bit of a reverse lottery system, right? I mean, you, you want the sidewalk, but you really hope it's on the other side of the street. Are, are we finding um, all of the work falls on the neighbors where the sidewalk lands, or are the blocks kind of pitching in? What are, what are we seeing out there?
As far as, uh, sharing, uh, the
Sort of the maintenance. I mean, you know, the snow ends up on that sidewalk. Is it literally falling on that homeowner, or are we seeing any other models happening out there?
Yeah, I can speak to that one, Councilmember Fisher. Um, in most cases, it's the adjacent property owner, but I did hear one case, Member, uh, the neighborhood of Gulf Terrace, which I think was the year before you were on the council, where they petitioned to add two additional sidewalks. And they had some neighbors that, one neighbor in particular that was going to have trouble clearing the snow, and they offered to do that, and I think they've been doing that over the years is helping their neighbor clear that snow. So that's the one case that I know of, and I wouldn't be surprised if that's happening on case by case around, around the city on some of these resident-maintained sidewalks.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, other questions from council members? If, if not, I've got a few, and I, and I need, I need some help from my fellow council members on this issue, too. Uh, well, first of all, it's, uh, the fence issue, I think, uh, Member Brindle, you're on to something there. Uh, that Saturday morning that, uh, Member Brindle and I were over there, met with Ms. Berger and Ms. Yeager. Uh, I was, despite the fact that I appreciate the importance of the pedestrian bicycle master plan guiding principles and generally want them followed and see the wisdom of having them followed. On that two-block stretch, as Member Brindle and I stood there on that Saturday morning, there were all kinds of people coming back and forth across the creek. Just as Mr. Disler notes, uh, four hundred and twenty-two people a day over that bridge. Uh, but they were, because of the, because of the number of cars that come down the street, I mean, the average number of cars on the street are a hundred and sixty-four a day, and the average, the eighty-fifth percentile of speed is twenty-one point three miles an hour. I don't know if we saw more than one or two cars as we stood in the middle of the street, but everybody was using the street over there as that connector to, um, the sidewalk system on, uh, north of Fifty-fourth uh, into Minneapolis. And then I don't know what they were doing. Um, so I'm, and we're gonna have the sidewalk discussion with respect to West Fifty-sixth Street, too. Uh, but I'm wondering, in this circumstance, you know, what people's thoughts are about this short stretch of sidewalk on Beard Avenue. When I stood over there, I thought it was really quaint and charming, and, but of course, and Member Fisher, when I was having a conversation with him about it, pointed out that, well, once you put in the curb and gutter, it, it changes that look, too, from the, uh, kind of the cozy country lane look to something that looks uh, more urban and modern, and the neighbors over there definitely want that stormwater management system in place with the curb and gutter. And so I'm, I'm really wrestling with, uh, what to do on this, uh, sidewalk, if you want that uh, two-long, a two-block long stretch of, of Beard, when I see how it gets used now, the street, and, um, and knowing that it would be used in the same way, I think. Uh, I wonder about the wisdom of the sidewalk, and then when I hear about the, um, uh, the snowplow with those short yards to the west, uh, I think it's inevitable that they'd be covering the sidewalk as they plow the street with snow, and I think, uh, you know, the neighbors would be doing it, it'd be a heavy lift for them to clear all that snow, uh, just even with a light snowfall, because it's gonna add uh, quite a bit to the, um, uh, to the volume of snow that they'd have to handle, either with a snow blower or by hand. So, I've got issues there, and then I've got issues down on Beard Court. Uh, Member Staunton wisely pointed out that we're clearing that court out right now with its existence. Uh, Member Stottin wisely pointed out that we're clearing that court out right now with its existing circumference or diameter. And I'm reluctant to uh see a situation evolve where we're adding hardscape uh in that cul-de-sac uh any more than is necessary. I see the wisdom, as member Brindle pointed out, of kind of tipping the drainage towards uh, the west where we have that uh, that area there where we have boulders in there now, uh, before we get um, well, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's name, Mr. Soper. Before we get to his uh property, there is a way to manage water in there to get it to the creek and also to manage, and I like the idea of having um, the catch basin, maybe more than one catch basin in that area. So, and those are kind of the things I'm wrestling with. The project itself, I think, is, is a goal. I think it's important to get this done. Uh, I just need a little bit more discussion around the, the Beard Court diameter. Uh, the loss of the trees in there, I don't like that idea. Um, if it works now at its existing diameter, I don't see why we can't kind of clean it up and, and make it work in the future at its, at, at, or close to its existing diameter. And then that sidewalk issue. I really don't know what to do there. I was so firm in my mind when I talked to Ms. Berger and Yeager that we, I, I, I didn't favor the sidewalk, but I also see the argument that member Fisher is advancing as having some merit, so.
So I, if I could, Chad or Aaron, do you have a diagram, the di, the, the ped diagram that shows just this neighborhood? So for me, the, the challenge is um, when you come in and look at the street on a, on a yard, you know, a property by property basis, we can find all kinds of reasons not to do the sidewalk, because it absolutely impinges on people, you know, things they've planted, the fences, all kinds of things. Especially in a, in a, a little area like this. Um, but I think that
Slide with the, with your bike ped master plan that showed going to the south. Sorry, Member Fisher.
Yeah.
There, that graphic was the big picture.
If you look at that picture, and this is what, what I struggle with, because I can, you know, I, I, I empathize with all of this in terms of what is happening on those blocks, absolutely. But when I look at this diagram that shows the importance of Beard as a connector between France and Xerxes.
Yeah.
And then, you know, then just say, well, we're just going to leave that little two-block stretch because it's hard. And then you get into the whole sidewalk network north of it. We're just sort of leaving a gap. And you could argue that, um, yeah, there's not much traffic there. But it, it absolutely makes a difference. And we heard from some people that, you know, if you're really young or if you're older and have any sort of uh impairments, walking out in that street can be problematic. And it sounds like we were all out there. Uh, the evening I was out there was a Sunday evening. And Chad, I sent you a photo early. Do you, do you have that one somewhere around? Um, this one, so, so I was out there on a Sunday evening. My wife dropped me off on the south side of Beard and I walked a lot of people out on the sidewalks where we've built them. Uh, then I got out, crossed the creek, came up this two-block stretch. And I was walking up, this is right at the intersection of fifty-fourth. In that two-block walk, three cars passed me. Now granted, maybe it was a busy time in the neighborhood on a Sunday evening, they were all out. It was a nice evening. And uh, but what struck me was what happened right here. Because of the nature of the circle that you see in the intersection, cars need to, to pull to one side. They can't, they can't sort of stay in the middle and, and do their thing. They have to get over to the right. Now granted, I probably should have been on the other side facing traffic. Um, but I'm nearly touching that car right now, because we're trying to share the same space. And it's fine for me. Um, but what if you're a small child? Would, would anyone feel comfortable with your child standing a foot from that car as they're walking to wherever? And, and I guess what I would ask is, and, and I know this is so difficult, because we, you know, we, we talk to people, we hear the stories and we don't want to impinge. But I keep falling back on sort of the, what's the common good in this? What, what are we trying to do in the whole system? And I think what we're trying to do is make sure we have safe connectivity through these neighborhoods. And, and I would, I would want us to try to figure out a way to get the sidewalk through here and not just give up on it. Maybe there's ways, you know, we have to customize it a little. I don't know what we need to do, but I would hate to just fall back on let's not do the sidewalk, because then and, and we, we see it, you know, we'll be talking about Fifty-Sixth Street in a little bit here. There's a bunch of stories over there as well. And everywhere we try to build a sidewalk, we have stories. I, you know, we know that. So we just got to decide, are we going to build these sidewalks or not? I mean, I'm talking about the system here.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair, fair point. Member Brindle, you were down there with me. What were your thoughts after you, I mean, I kind of got the sense of it when you were there, but what are you thinking about?
Well, uh, I guess I, you know, when I'm standing there, it, you can, you can really feel how close the edge of the roadway is to the homes on the west side of Beard. Now granted, that's side yards along that side of, along that side of Beard. Um, the, those homes all, all have addresses that are either fifty-fifth or they're Fuller. Um, but um, and, and they, you know, clearly they have some sidewalks out there, but these are side yards along, um, so that's thirty-five hundred Fuller. And over here, this is thirty-five oh one, um, Fifty-Fourth Street. And so as I'm, as I'm looking at that, I'm remembering Fifty-Fourth Street over by the creek by Edina Community Lutheran. When we put that sidewalk through, it really was close. Those are side yard setbacks. And the closer we got to Wooddale, the closer that sidewalk, they, the edge of the roadway in that sidewalk got to some of those properties, the dining room windows, for example. And um, and it's, it's, it, it does make you take a step back as a council member and say, wow, that's re, really going to affect that property. But looking at the connectivity of it, there is a sidewalk north of Fifty-Fourth in Minneapolis. And my guess is some of the people walking on this section of Beard are coming to and from Minneapolis uh across Fifty-Fourth to get across the creek and take the walk uh along, uh, along Beard, south of the creek. And then back to Minneapolis. And um, and so looking at the connectivity of it, um, I'm, I'm actually wondering um, looking. I know this is a, you can look at this as an isolated piece of sidewalk, but it really isn't that. It is part of a network that will take people to Chowan Park and back, um, back to Fifty-Fourth and north from there. So I'm, I'm of a mind to say, uh, if we can do this, if we can do this and eliminate the, um, if, you know, I, I'm almost wondering, with the small amount of traffic that is there, is it worth considering not having the grass boulevard? And um, and gaining some space there for uh some snow, snow removal um, to, to have the, the sidewalk right at the bulkhead. And I know we don't like to do this, but this is not a busy street. So it, it seems to be that maybe that's an option uh because of the light amount of traffic that's there. But um, but I, the more I, I walked away, Mayor, thinking the same thing you thought. That hmm, no, I don't think a sidewalk needs to be here. But the more I look at the, how it fits in the network and how it's going to connect to the, to the Beard Avenue sidewalk, south of the creek, the more I feel like it is going to be a missing link in the network. So if we don't do it, so that, that's, that's where I am right now. And I, I also heard um, uh, phone call or two from residents who say, I know there's a strong push against this sidewalk, but I'm in favor of it. And I know there was a, an opinion on better together in favor of at least one uh that I saw. So, um, and I know that Director Milner raised his hand as well, so.
Yeah, he did. And if you could go back to that drawing, when Member Brindle was still talking, I wanted to ask a question that might be helpful. So we, we saw the existing uh configuration out there when we were out there, Member Brindle. And so what I'm getting out of this document is that the site, when you narrow the road, this is one thing I hadn't thought of either, that when you narrow the road to twenty-four feet, there, what you're saying is that there wouldn't, if I'm getting this drawing right, there wouldn't be any more intrusion towards those properties to the west than there is now, even though there's a new sidewalk in there plus a boulevard.
That's right.
In this case, it would be like a foot to a foot and a half on each side additional. So we can't quite fit it in to the existing street. And then the south half of the block, Aaron mentioned, it's four and a half feet uh additional on each side, because that street's narrower down there. And I was just going to say that to complement member Brindle's comments, you know, we have done sidewalks right on the back of the concrete curb and gutter. I just wanted to recall or mention to the council that when we do that, we make them six feet wide. So we can have like a one-foot concrete buffer. So people, we can re, uh, put new joints in there and signify special people with canes. They can feel that texture difference before they hit the six-inch curb and step off that. So that could be an option here that could be considered by the council.
Yeah, it, I, so right now, we're looking at ten feet on the back of the curb where with that, we would be looking at six feet.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so instead of five feet of boulevard and five feet of sidewalk, you'd have a, a six-foot wide sidewalk. And didn't we do that on part of Fifty-Fourth where we put in?
We did, yep.
Were down on uh Sixty-Second too, or somewhere down there?
Yes, we've done that in Edina. Yep.
Yeah.
And we typically do that like around trees when we want to protect trees. But Fifty-Fourth Street was an example where it was really tight the whole way. And we, we put it on the back for quite a distance.
So if you went to twenty-four feet on the street with, and allowed parking on one side, and you went to the six-foot behind the boulevard uh sidewalk, you'd actually take up less space than the roadway takes up right now?
Uh, that would be the case on the north half, the north block. On the south block right here where Aaron's showing, I think it would be, we'd have maybe a foot or two difference in that section. Right around two feet difference each side. So very minimal impacts. The north block, yeah, would fit right in with the existing. So I know that concern, the closest house is that one in the northwest corner of Fifty-Fourth Street. So that one wouldn't have any additional impacts, most likely there. I mean, when we do design, we got to make sure it fits. So it'd be pretty minimal impacts.
Well, uh, other thoughts from council members about Member Brindle's idea of contemplating the um, the six-foot wide sidewalk with the um, it's, it's, you use an exposed aggregate on that one-foot boulevard, don't call it.
We used to, we do, we do more one-foot joints now, exposed. In order to get exposed, there's a little bit of an environmental issue with that. So we've used more jointing uh to signify that edge.
Okay. What about down on, was it on Sixty-Second where we put in uh a two-foot wide boulevard and then we planted it with lilies?
Correct, Mayor, yes.
So then you'd end up with uh seven feet instead of ten feet?
Yes, correct.
Does that have any, does that have any uh appeal one way or the other? Or people's thoughts on that idea that we did down on Sixty-Second to keep the uh, to protect as much of the yards to the west as we could if we went this route? Or what are the rest of the council members' thoughts on the, what's being proposed by staff, the, the, the five and five?
You know, for me, I'm more, I'm more interested, I'm most interested in the system that we build out the sidewalk system where the plan says. I am, I don't know that, I don't feel like I have to get involved in the detail of what the sidewalk looks like on this block. I think what's been somewhat successful is when we've let the neighbors participate in that a little bit, um, knowing that there's going to be a sidewalk. So I, I don't know. I mean, we could, I, I'm open to not having to do five-foot, five-foot, right? We could, we could do the sidewalk up near the curb or we could do the, the um, the smaller boulevard. Both of those, by the way, are going to have impacts on the clearing the sidewalk, which is why I was asking earlier that, you know, if there's sort of a yeah, I didn't know if there's other neighborhoods that kind of pitched in and said, hey, we're all going to work on clearing this for the good of all. And, and uh, it's one sidewalk, they picked one side of the street, but it's for our block, right? So I don't know, I, it, it feels like, um, you know, we need to be clear that there's either going to or not going to be a sidewalk here. But after that, I'm, I'm a little bit flexible in terms of what meets the neighborhood's needs best.
Or maybe it's a matter of as member, as Director Milner says, uh, they get into final design and then they have a better sense of what might work uh the best over there in terms of minimizing impact on the west properties.
Right.
So Director Milner, haven't we done that before too? Haven't we approved a sidewalk? Uh, and then you come back for the, uh, final approval on the, on the type of design we're going to use for the sidewalk?
Yes, we have, Mayor. In this case, you know, it's four properties. So it's, it's a pretty easy engagement effort with these four individual properties to, to share that. If the council approves tonight, say, we, we need to do a sidewalk, let's work through those details. Would you like a space for grass or daylilies? Or maybe you wouldn't like it. So we could work out those details.
Okay. All right, does um, anyone on the council have other, other questions? I mean, this is kind of uh, for me, it's been really a helpful conversation, because I, I left over there feeling like it would be an exception. You know, as much as I appreciate the work that went into establishing these pedestrian bicycle master plan guiding principles, I thought this could be an exception to that, because they could just use the street. But I do, I do understand the wisdom and have long understood the benefit of separating people from traffic.
Yep.
So uh, and then the fact that it's not going to have that same country lane feel with curb and gutter there, that's somewhat influential too. And the fact that, uh, you know, I can see the drawings on how the roadway has been uh at least preliminarily configured where it has minimal impact on those west properties. Uh, you know, really, at least the north block, no more impact than what's there now. Uh, that's influential with me too. So I, I found myself kind of changing my mind from when I was out there. Sounds like, for Brindle, it sounds like you have too.
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Anderson.
Thank you. I uh, I'm having the same kind of experience that, that you are. Uh, you know, when I first went over there, I thought, well, who doesn't want a sidewalk? I mean, why wouldn't you? Um, because we, you know, we do them well. Then, you know, you walk and talk and look around and you have this peccolic feel and not much automobile traffic, a lot of people walking, maybe a lot of people walking makes a better case for a sidewalk. But then, you know, you back off and then it, it, what I get mostly concerned about, especially is the impact of the property owners on the west side. Because there is going to be some, we're moving utility poles, you're doing a lot. And then you, to me, you, you have to weigh out, well, what's, is it worth it to them? But then the bigger picture, as Member Fisher mentions, is the connectivity is, is a lot. So I get, I get on the bubble pretty quick here. Um, you know, you kind of think, well, why wouldn't you? But why wouldn't we here? You don't really have to. No, well, but there's connectivity. And, and I guess if I, if I had a sense of absolutely minimizing impact to the adjacent uh homeowners, um, I would feel better about the sidewalk. I, you know, the sidewalk itself, um, it's, it's really not as, as, as pressing to me as the impact on the, on the, on the homeowners and, and the clear change in their neighborhood. But I do see the point about connectivity. So a little, a little more discussion here would be useful for me.
Yeah, that's a good, good point, Member Anderson. I guess that's, you articulated well. Uh, I think what some of us are concerned about is that potential impact on those west side properties. Where we saw those side yards, in some cases, front yards were really shallow. So Members, Director Milner or Mr. Ditzler, you want to talk a little bit more about that impact issue?
Well, I think we've heard some great comments from the council. We were hearing your, your concerns and I think we could work with those adjacent property owners to design, design the sidewalk. I think most likely they're all going to want that six-foot sidewalk along the back of the curb. And I think that addresses some of the pole issues, we won't have to move some of the poles. Even the retaining wall might go away in that case and the fence is no longer needed. So I think when we get into the final design, we could really work with those owners to decide what they want along this, it really is a short segment here, but the connectivity is really the benefit.
I remember years ago, over on Maple Road, that nobody over there, they wanted to be like country club, but they didn't really want any sidewalks. And it was again, like a two block, two block long stretch over there. And because of the art fair and other activity and it's kind of a, you know, it was a neighborhood where people were cutting on Maple Road to get over to France on 49th Street, we put in sidewalks to separate people from traffic. And most of the block, most of the neighborhood didn't want them at the time, but they were older residents and all the younger residents that were there, they did want them to protect their kids. And we thought safety first, you know? Now, it's true that there was more car traffic over there than there is here, this minimal amount of car traffic and they're moving a little bit faster probably, but that, that basic concern about safety first and separating people from traffic that sidewalks allow you to do is a pretty important consideration. And I think as more and more young people have moved into Maple Road and other folks have retired and maybe left and gone to warm places, you know, you got to think about the future too. So I think that's what I hear, Member Fisher saying is, it's connectivity plus thinking about the future.
Can I, can I just add one more thing, Mr. Mayor? So this particular spot is tricky because it feels like this little oasis, this little dead end, and it's really local traffic. And I think we all felt that when we were out there. But it is about safety and it's about safety for everyone. And, and I just want to relay a little story that really impacted me this week as I've been thinking about this sidewalk and the one on 56. So my daughter and I went out for a walk just three nights ago and we went in our neighborhood down on Poppy Lane, which if you know Poppy Lane, it's a one-in, one-way in, one-way out. You know, it's, so it's the neighbors, it's the people that live down there or visitors. And we're walking along and we're walking against traffic, it's no sidewalk, so we're in the street. And so those neighbors, by the way, make the same argument, there's no traffic on our street. So we're walking and the car's coming toward us and now it's really coming toward us, it's aiming at us. It is coming right at us, veering from the normal street. And it kept coming and it kept coming, wasn't speeding up or anything, but it was literally aiming at us and we basically had to jump out of the way. And, you know, I immediately had the, anyway, I, I'm looking at the driver like, what's up? And it wasn't a teenager being funny, it wasn't somebody trying to scare us. They, the way they corrected and just went on their way, it was someone on their cellphone. And, you know, if, if, if it had been a mom in a stroller with a baby in a stroller and couldn't jump out of the way, we have a bad situation there on a little dead-end street. So we got to be so careful about, you know, we're either going to build this system out and think about getting people off the street or we're not. And I think safety is a big thing. And ironically, if you go look at the consent agenda, I think it was item 6G, tonight we just voted for a joint powers agreement for distracted driving vehicle program. And if you look at the data for the number of people that are being killed and permanently injured in the state of Minnesota because of distracted driving, it's, it's out of its world. And I, I just don't feel like that's going to get any better. So that's the perspective I've brought to this, especially tonight, and just wanted to share that.
All right, yeah, thank you. That was persuasive for me when you told me that story the other night. So Director Milner, so the issues that Member Anderson has raised, how do those get, get resolved here in the context of thinking about approving this project, but making sure that we have the least amount of impact on those west side neighbors?
Yep, I think we'll go and meet with those folks and share the thoughts of the council. And I'm guessing we're going to end up at that six-foot, the minimal impacts is the six-foot right in the back of curb. And that still gets to the safety and the connectivity piece. I think if there's an owner that would like a boulevard, we could put that in on one of those properties. But again, I'm guessing most of them are going to say, put it right on the back with six feet. And that meets the goal of the bike pad plan. I think that separation of vehicles here isn't as necessary as it is on busier streets.
Well, this is a little gem of a neighborhood and that was one of the first things that Member Brindle, I talked to these folks about Ms. Porter and Ms. Jaeger. But I can see the, I can see the wisdom in what everybody's talking about tonight. It's caused me to rethink what we should be doing here. So is there a, is there, does anybody else wants to add anything? Otherwise, we can entertain a.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Staunton?
So I, I just wanted to, my two cents worth is that this is very reminiscent of our 58th Street experience last year. You know, we, we had this kind of give and take between the folks who lived along that corridor, who have the local expertise on the one hand, and then are very thoroughly considered, thoroughly engaged pedestrian and cyclist plan. And what I think, I think ultimately that was a successful outcome because we had, we struck this balance of engaging that community to make sure that they could help tailor it, tailor our big picture plan to their little neighborhood. And I think that's the same, I mean, it just feels like deja vu to me. We're trying to figure out what are their concerns, how can we adjust what we're doing, but at the same time, sticking to this larger network that if we just kind of pick and choose and put in some and don't put in other, we won't have a network.
Yeah, true.
So I think this is the right approach to kind of, you know, have our engineering staff back in touch with these neighbors and saying, look, we're going to have a sidewalk, the question is, how do we, we can do some adjustments of what we're normally doing, we don't need to design it right here, but I think there's been some good suggestions right here. And then you get to a, a final product that is, that is meeting both goals.
Yeah, all right. Thank you for those comments. Anyone else right now? I, I thank all of you for that conversation that was really helpful to me because I was really, I was first firm, as I said, about the fact that we could use the street for the connectivity, but the more we've talked and the more I thought about it, I'm convinced that we're on the right pathway here. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-129, which is the Creek Knoll A and B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project embodied in BA 459, which would approve the, not only the roadway reconstruction improvement embodied in BA 59, but would also contain that sidewalk along Beard Avenue? Is there a motion? Member Brindle moves? There a second?
Second.
Fisher, seconds. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Staunton?
We didn't spend much time talking about the cul-de-sac. And I, I kind of feel like that's another prime opportunity to kind of tailor this to this specific neighborhood. And it feels a little bit to me like overkill with the sidewalk and the full fleshing out. I would want to encourage us to kind of think about, do we want to put in all that much more pavement there and sidewalk if we can accomplish what we're doing within it? I, I, I'm, I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I, but I don't want to come away with the impression that we ought to just put in that full circle and sidewalk there.
Sure.
All right. Member Brindle?
And the other thing is to include in our, in our resolution that wherever there's a retaining wall, there would be a fence. And that if, if a resident decides they don't want the fence on their property, they would have to opt out. It just seems like, as I walked along there, it's not a high retaining wall, but it's high enough to get hurt. So if you don't know it's there. So, so I'd like to see the fence put in as a requirement and then opt out if somebody doesn't want it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Fisher?
I, I would just respectfully disagree and the only reason I disagree is in our neighborhood, you know, we walk all the time, we're walking on all these new sidewalks and there are little retaining walls, there are little sandstone and little, you know, they're, they're nice amenity in some cases and putting a fence up changes that quite a bit. And in 99% of these cases, it's really not a risk factor. People see it, it's obvious and it's not big. And if we mandate that we're going to put these fences up everywhere, I think we're going to, in a way, potentially uglify a lot of, of these neighborhoods when people don't, they're not going to want it. I think you should opt in and make the request if you have a safety concern, not just automatically go out and, you know, spend a bunch of money on these fences. Just my thought.
Director Milner, and I'm going to go back to Member Brindle.
Yeah, I guess this particular case is really unique with that one family in the situation they're in. So I think my, my answer to this question last week was, let's do it for this one because it is such a unique thing. We haven't seen this request in, you know, all the years we've been putting sidewalks in. So with this property, we're going to work with that property, I promised the council last time we would do that. But I would prefer not to make it a condition also just because it is such a unique issue with that one property's family.
It's not part of the motion right now. Member Brindle is suggesting that we should contemplate that, but I think maybe your assurance that we're, you're going to do as you, as you said you would do at the last meeting and work with this family, is that, is that sufficient, Member Brindle? And then any other families that might want some kind of decorative thing, we could work with them as well? It's more informal.
Right, and I'm fine with that, I just don't want it to be forgotten.
All right. And then I want to go to Member Anderson. And then back to the cul-de-sac conversation too. But Member Anderson, with respect to the concerns that you've got on the west side, same ones I think we've all got, have you reached some level of comfort there and the way we're going to approach this?
I have. I, I think it's just a matter of, what we're really doing here is we're tailoring the sidewalk and its impact to these homeowners. And I think that's a really good idea in this particular instance. And I have confidence that Director Milner and Mr. Ditzler can work with those folks. We've done it successfully in the past. And it, just to go back to Member Staunton's comments about 58, because that was a head scratcher and it went on a long time. And in the end, what was interesting, given the, the high level of interest, we've received two, if not three, letters thanking the, the work, thanking us far, the work that was done there and saying that they really loved the final result. And so I, you know, after it was all said and done, people really liked what was, what happened there for them. So I, I'm, I'm confident that with a lot of attention given and not just simply, you know, this is what we're going to do, we're going to slam it in. With, with the right attitude and the right cooperation with the homeowners, I think we'll come to something that'll be pretty, pretty swell. I think they'll enjoy it. So, so yeah, I'm confident.
Okay, good. Then Member Staunton, I want to come back to you. And Director Milner, I'm with Member Staunton, I, I think we should avoid doing much hardscape in, avoid hardscape in the cul-de-sac as much as possible. So I don't really favor that sidewalk on the west side either. I do favor looking carefully at stormwater management issues there and keeping the diameter of that cul-de-sac somewhat approximate to what it is now because we're, we're doing, we're cleaning it out now. So I don't, I don't see why we'd want to expand that. The neighbors seem to think that less hardscape is a better thing there and I think there's some pretty good arguments. Member Staunton, what are your, could you articulate a bit more how you'd like to have this handled, this issue?
Well, I, I'm not sure, you know, I'm, I'm not sure I want to design it, I'm just trying to give some direction about, you know, it seems like the pedestrian issues start once you cross 55th. And that's where you're really trying to separate vehicle traffic. You're not trying to separate people from vehicles in the cul-de-sac because there's what, two or three properties in there. And so I just want to, I, I just want to be thoughtful about not, you know, part of this, part of this project, and what we've heard from the neighbors is there's a, there's a vibe in this neighborhood and a lot of it has to do with that little cul-de-sac. And we shouldn't try to overdo it as we're trying to clean it up. I agree that the stormwater we need to manage, but we should just be, let's not, let's not overdo it just to fit a certain dimension that we have in mind.
All right. So instead of trying to craft something now, Director Milner, do you want to come back with us with final ideas on that before you do the work?
I think we've heard the goals tonight of, you know, limiting impacts. I really think we do need a sidewalk connection because cars could park in there and now you're walking around parked cars. So having that little dedicated, it's again, that connectivity, if you leave a little gap, who knows? So I think what I heard is, you know, other than the sidewalk piece, but I think we should do the sidewalk. We could work with Public Works in the fire department and see what they need, right? There's certain reaches for the fire department and then there's also, what is Public Works doing there today? We know we need to fix the stormwater and we could meet with the two or three residents in that area and come up with a plan that's somewhere between what's there today and what we're proposing and try to meet the needs of all those parties I just mentioned between the residents and Public Works and, and fire. I think we could bring you back that idea, design something that we could work with those neighbors and we could bring it back or I'm pretty confident we could get that in our big documents and have a successful project and have you see that during the award portion of the project.
Yeah, good. I think you'll get some good input from those neighbors on the cul-de-sac and then Mr. Soper to the west. Is that, is that, are you comfortable with that way of handling that, Member Staunton, and the rest of the council here?
Yeah, I am.
Me too.
Yep.
Are everybody else comfortable with that notion? Okay. All right. We've got a motion, a second, Resolution 2020-129. It was some supplemental understandings of how we're going to do a couple of things. This is for the Creek Knoll A and B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project, plus the sidewalk embodied in BA 459. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Ms. Tim.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Huffland?
Aye. Resolution passes and is approved as stated. Okay, as crafted, I should say. Now we're on to Melody Lake A and B, Grandview A, Crest C Neighborhood, that is roadway reconstruction project that's proposed and embodied in BA 457. And of course, this project, two weeks ago, led to this discussion about substrate and the level of the assessment and the basis for the level of the assessment caused by subsoil conditions. And so Director Milner, I'll let you introduce the matter and you can tell us what you're thinking about here and then we'll have a conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a council, yep, a follow-up to the Melody Lake project. So the public engagement summary, we had the public hearing on the 7th with live testimony. We had 11 comments and we continued that public hearing to Wednesday, December 9th and we received 15 additional comments on Better Together Edina. So we're really pleased that we're getting a variety of options for people to participate so they don't have to stay on hold during some of these long council meetings and they're, and they can participate when they're available and able to. So we're, we're really encouraged by that. Some of the comments that we've received, you know, there's concerns with the estimated assessment amounts, request to lower that amount and then there's Request to lower that amount. And then there's support not do that. They do not support that sidewalk on Fifty-Sixth Street. And there was a petition to that matter. And the recommendation that we talked about, there's the project cost concerns, but there's also the work of the Street Funding Task Force. So we're asking the council on the accessible portion of the project to make a motion tonight to continue this project, this improvement hearing for no more than six months from December seventh, twenty twenty. So staff can bring back more information, and that's allowed in the statute listed there. Do want to have the discussion on the sidewalks to know if that's part of the project or not tonight, so we can bring that more information back. I wanted to break up the sidewalks a little bit for discussion. So you look at sidewalks, I broke it into three pieces. So the Hanson Road sidewalk is north and south, circled here. Real discussion on that one. We have the Fifty-Sixth Street sidewalk. This is the west half, I would call it, in the street reconstruction project. And the east portion of that sidewalk is within that portion of street that was reconstructed in two thousand twelve. So there's kind of three different pieces here that the council consider. Again, there's no assessment, so you could consider that with a three fifths vote. And we are again referencing the bike master plan and all the goals of that master plan. We presented you two options last week. Option one was in the staff report of a five-foot boulevard, five-foot sidewalk. And these options are just in regards to the east portion, East of Code Avenue for Fifty-Sixth, in that area where streets were recently redone in two thousand twelve. Option one is the five-foot boulevard, five-foot walk and no modifications to the roadway. Option two was moving that curb and gutter three feet in, then building the five-foot walk and five-foot boulevard. And that increases the cost, but it also is starting to tear up stuff we just did eight years ago. There's another option when we started looking at what's in place and and the impacts. So with option two, there's seven feet of impacts. Another option, most of the concrete driveway aprons were built with a two to three-foot boulevard edge. We could build the sidewalk with no modifications to the current roadway. Just match the back of those existing aprons, and that would be the same impacts to the the yard areas as option two. So to show that a little bit, here's the driveway aprons. These go back about two feet. So instead of going back another three feet at the edge of the sidewalk, we would just put that sidewalk right along that back edge. Just have a two-foot boulevard. We can do things like we did on Sixty-Second Street. That could be tea lilies. It'll be grass, or on Fifty-Eighth Street, we offer just some green ground cover. Give the residents the option of what they want in that boulevard space. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions from council members? First of all, maybe we go ahead, Member Brendel.
Thank you. Director Milner, would you please bring up that picture of the driveway apron again? Okay, so help me understand this. So the the boulevard, the planted boulevard would take up that two feet that you see represented by the driveway apron?
Yep. So our proposal was was making that boulevard three feet in the staff report. We could go down to a different option where we just match the back of aprons and do a two-foot boulevard. It would be two feet of boulevard with a five-foot sidewalk, and that level of impact would be the same as if we moved this curb three feet in and then built the five-foot and five-foot. And I like that option better because we don't have to rip up all the curb in the street again.
Right, right. So we would just be encroaching further into the right of what?
The options are ten feet in or seven feet in. And at seven feet, we have two options. How do we do seven feet? We leave the curb and just do a two-foot boulevard and a five-foot sidewalk? Or do we move the curb three feet and have a five-foot boulevard, a five-foot sidewalk? And that still is only seven feet of new impacts from behind the curb. That makes sense.
Okay, so the difference between the two is two feet?
Three feet.
Three feet.
Three feet? Okay.
Yep.
All right. All right. So basically, we would be looking at the two-foot boulevard and then the five-foot sidewalk. And yeah, okay, all right, that's fine.
And that's from that would be from Code on Fifty-Sixth, from Code to Normandale Boulevard?
That's what I was proposing, that area where the street has been redone in two thousand twelve. I kind of limit some of those impacts and the concerns of the residents a little bit in this area. The other two segments would be as we recommended in the staff report. We have an opportunity to reconstruct the whole street, and we can really balance those impacts from side to side like we've talked about previously.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor? Yes, Members, Members Staunton?
Can I just, I think one of the things I'm curious about here is how this how this re-rigging would dovetail with the timeline that we're talking about. And I know there is this proposal to wait six months before we order the improvement or up to six months. So maybe if if Director Milner could give us some sense of how he would go about. You know, this is different than the last one we had in the sense that the last one, you know, we're kind of ordering the project to move forward tonight, and this one, we really wouldn't be doing that. We'd be waiting to order the project to move forward later. So what does that do in terms of design and engagement?
Yeah, thanks for that question. That's kind of where I was heading in a slightly different way. But Director Milner?
Yeah, the motion is to continue it so staff can bring back more information. And the statute allows you to to do design and go for bids. So that's what we would intend to do is design the project and bring back bids, because if the bids come in really low, that affects the assessments. But also, at the same time, we're hoping to wrap up the Street Funding Task Force work in March. And we may have some different ways to fund a project like this that has some huge impacts due to subcuts. We see those all aligning, aligning roughly about the same time, that we would come back in April with the bid amounts. That'd be the more information we bring back, but also might have a new assessment policy. And if we don't have all that stuff to line up, then I would still come back in within six months, and we may have to just delay this project for another time because we can't make the benefit test work with our current assessment policy.
Right, right.
So what tell us how that interfaces with your notion of the sidewalk on proposed sidewalk from Code to Salt State, Normandale Boulevard, where the, you know, that area we previously reconstructed. You want a decision on that regardless? Is that what you're saying?
We would because it'd be part of the design and the bid. So we, I don't see that. I mean, the eastern portion could go separately, but I think we're tying it to the street recon at this point. If we decided to do that on its own as a standalone sidewalk project, we would first have to cancel this project and then come back to the council and say, we want to do this east portion. And that would be a separate standalone project that I don't think we would do in twenty-one. That'd be for further discussion. So we would want to bundle all these sidewalks into this one big, big bid package now. And hopefully, we can get that, all these things to align in April, roughly, approximately April.
All right. And then if you decided you wanted to go, if if we decided that this wouldn't work under our existing policy, we had to wait beyond the six-month mark. Then you'd have to make a decision whether you want to come to the council and ask about doing that sidewalk from Code to Normandale Boulevard on Fifty-Sixth anyway?
Yeah, and we'd have the the documents put together for bidding. We could award just that portion, or we would just delay it for further consider, future consideration when that big neighborhood roadway gets done, because it has to get done at some point.
But we don't have to address that issue tonight. We can address that at the six-month mark.
Yeah, I just want to know if we should include it into the project document, into the bidding documents.
Sure. And which 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 option?
I would say that, you know, to meet the needs of the residents, I would say that option kind of one B. Let's match that sidewalk right to the back of the aprons and only have seven feet of impacts. That's the least amount of impacts to the yards. And we don't have to dig up a brand or a semi-new street in two thousand twelve.
So your your motion would actually be to continue the Melody Lake project to for six months, as you mentioned, and had on the screen with the addition of option one B on the on the sidewalk for the for the area that was previously reconstructed?
For the area not within the street recon. Yep. Yes, Mayor.
Is that from a concept standpoint? Appeal or not appeal to council members? Thoughts from council members, Member Staunton?
So I guess, you know, I'm I'm in the same place I was in on the previous one in terms of our our network. I've heard a lot from folks about, you know, and there's been very compelling testimony from the many of the neighbors in this area that they don't want the sidewalk, but you know, I think the trick is how do you, how do you put it in and create your network while still doing your best to work with the neighbors? And so I can't see. I think this has to be all or nothing. I I don't see a reason to do the sidewalk just west of Code. Because then you do have half a lump there and you don't have the connectivity. So I wouldn't be in favor of doing the east side of Code if we didn't proceed this year with the west side of Code either. I think they're a match set.
Yep.
And and I just think I think we we are what we're moving toward on kind of a case-by-case basis is it's really important, if we're serious about this connectivity, to follow through on this pedestrian and cyclist plan. But do it in a way in each street that we encounter that really takes into account how to minimize the impacts and take into account the local expertise of the people who live on that street.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Members, Mr. Mayor, Fisher?
Chad, can you bring up the the diagram that you had up? I think it was like page four of your presentation? You know, we got a lot of emails and a lot of commentary on Better Together and everything about that this is absolutely not necessary, and I'm just not seeing it that way. Again, back to the network, but a lot of the comments suggested that people, if you're coming from, say, Arden Park, and you're walking west, you know, the future plan is to have the the piece over on the east side. There you go. On the, that's that Gulf Terrace. But but the comment was, well, people will just go down to to Benton, and I just don't see that. That's not going to happen. So this is, if you look at it, everything north of Benton, there is nothing going east-west. This is the one street that we could link across. So and get you over to Yancey Park and through. So I agree that this entire piece is essential for the network. But similar to what I said last time, I'm not hung up on us having to decide the details. And and again, I don't want to open up a free-for-all, but you know, having some neighbor input. The other, the other comment we got was the folks east of Code were feeling a little bit left out, like they weren't part of this whole street reconstruction conversation. And then the sidewalk got thrown in, and all of a sudden they felt like, whoa, 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 no one was talking to us about this. And maybe this part of the conversation could get them engaged and have, you know, again, the message is there's going to be a sidewalk, but what what makes the most sense? And the and the reason I asked the question about what makes the most sense, Chad, I think your your idea of one B makes a lot of sense, but in the last conversation, I feel like we were talking about that two-foot boulevard was problematic. And I don't know. I mean, maybe people feel like they'd rather, you know, these these houses are further away. Maybe they'd be feeling better about having a sidewalk closer but a bigger boulevard. I don't know. I haven't, we haven't engaged at that level. Mostly, it was people on that street saying, I'd rather not have it.
Yep, good thought. Member Anderson, any thoughts along the lines of Member Fisher or some other?
Actually, yes. It it feels to me like we are entering into a time where we're saying connectivity is very important. We're committed to it. It's a safety issue. We may or may not have more traffic on the streets. It's going to be slower one way or the other. And coupled with that is we're creating an environment of I guess I won't say individualizing, but making certain that the impact is extremely positive for the the residents who receive the benefit of these improvements. And I I and I think we can do that. It takes a commitment to doing it. And it feels like we're arriving at that point. And that I think it's the most important thing we accomplish here. Is to say, you know, we know we have to do these things going forward. But how do we make it most workable for the people who are going to be impacted by construction and they're going to have special assessments to pay? How do we make this enjoyable for them so that we receive letters in the future similar similar to those that we received on Fifty-Eight? Saying, thank you, thank you. I didn't really, I didn't like it going in, but I really like it coming out. And if that's our goal, I think we've done a whole lot here tonight.
But, Member Brendel?
Thank you. Director Milner, I'm going to ask you to put up that section of the plan again, if you would, please. Page four of your presentation. And my observation when a sidewalk goes in is that the concrete is barely dry and people want to be on that sidewalk. And the people who want to be on that sidewalk aren't the people in the neighborhood. It's the people who are going to use that sidewalk as part of the network of how they get places. So looking at this, you've got the crossing of Highway one hundred. People come down, they go west on the Fifty-Sixth Street sidewalk, and they get to Yancey Park. Or they take it all the way down to Benton. And and they go west on Benton. Actually, Chad, if you would take your pointer back up to Yancey Park, please. So they take the sidewalk up to Yancey Park, and they go through the park and they go over to Vernon Avenue. And they go on Vernon in the bike lane. And south on Vernon, and they hook up to the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail. That's how I see this working. It is that piece of connectivity that this piece of sidewalk is going to be crucial for. I did read a comment from from one of the residents in the area who said, if I hear one more time the connectivity of this sidewalk, and and I'm really sorry to hear that because it is connectivity. It is the purpose of this pedestrian and safety, pedestrian and cyclist master plan with connectivity in mind. And this is not something that was dreamt up by this council. It is something that comes from the quality of life surveys from early in my time as a council member. The number one gap and that we heard from residents is trail connections. Sidewalks and trails. And so that is what we're addressing with connectivity in this plan. And I I couldn't be more excited about seeing this actually become a reality. Because every time we would see, and we can all remember a street reconstruction project where there was a sidewalk proposed as part of that project. And the residents in the area look at it and say, what is that? Well, if, you know, it's a sidewalk that ends here and it begins there. But in the future, it's going to go on beyond on both ends. It is, it is something we build in pieces. But it is part of a larger network. And so for that reason, I think that I'm I I'm in support, I absolutely in support of seeing that plan come to fruition and be a reality.
All right. Thank you, Member Brendel. Member Staunton?
I just, I want to emphasize, I think I I just want to pick up on a point that Councilmember Fisher made, and I think it's a really good one. I Fisher made, and I think it's a really good one. I think this is, this is such an unusual situation because of that eastern end of 56th Street really wasn't part of the street project, which already is double the size a normal street project would be. But they kind of got added on in the end. And I understand why. But I do think it does emphasize the point that, you know, if we're sending the message that, look, there's going to be a sidewalk, it would be good to be doubling our efforts to kind of reengage them and say, okay, you know, there's going to be a sidewalk. How are we gonna, how are we going to do this in a way that's really going to make sense for your portion of the street? And I think the 1B is probably the answer. But, but to the extent that we can do some of that, I think it would be really helpful. And I see Director Milner with his, his hand up to
I saw that too. I think he, that was a hand raised that says bid alternate.
I heard boulevard discussion, right? Comparing to the last one. In this case, context really, I would not go to zero boulevard in this case. Because if we do that, then we got to rip up every one of those driveway aprons. And now we're impacting that street that was built in 2012. And there's residents still paying for that street. So I think in this regard, we want to at least have that minimum of a two-foot. But if people want five to make more of a space for plantings and trees, that'd be perfectly acceptable to me. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to steer toward one outcome or another. My point is just to, I think we, we got off to a slow start engaging that end of the street for, for reasons that are understandable, but we should try and double back and fix that.
Yeah.
So the question that Member Fisher raises and Member Staunton reinforces is how do we, how do we accomplish what you want to accomplish and, and go back to the neighbors and give them a little flexibility on, on input? For those neighbors west or east of Code?
Yeah, I think there's options for the boulevard width. I think we can give them options for plantings, right? We can do daylilies, grass, or the ground cover like we're doing on 58th Street. So give them options of sidewalks going in. There's going to be a minimum boulevard in this case. So we don't impact the street that you're paying for. And give them options on, they can go wider boulevard or, or not, two to five feet. And then what's the plantings that are going to happen along that corridor?
All right. And can you manage that in your bid process is what I was thinking about?
Yep. We can get feedback from them and have that conversation. And we can bid out the three options for grass and stuff, but we would seek the feedback on the boulevard width from those residents now.
Right. Right. Okay. All right.
That's a good option.
Okay. So we've got a suggested motion here to approve the continuation of the Melody Lake A and B, Grandview A, Birchcrest C, Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Improvement Hearing for no more than six months from December 7, 2020, for staff to bring back more information per Minstat 429.031 subdivision 1F. And then the, the, the notion that the sidewalk would be included as determined by staff working with the neighborhood. Is there anyone that wishes to make that motion?
So moved.
Moves. I saw that hand go up just a split second before. Member Brendel, seconds?
Sure.
Fisher, Member Brendel. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Ms. Tim.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The motion carries, and we will defer this matter as stated in the motion for six months from December 7, 2020, for staff to bring back more information pursuant to state statute as cited, and also include sidewalks in this project. And staff will have that discussion with the neighborhood. Very good. All right. One more item in this portion of the agenda. And that is the matter Director Teague has. And this is several different actions here requested, or, or possible, I should say, embodied in Resolution 2021-25, 2021-24. And then the first reading on ordinance 2020-17. This involves the preliminary rezoning request for the US, what we call the US Bank site from PCD 3 to PUD, including an overall development plan, preliminary site plan for the US Bank site, preliminary plat and consideration of environmental assessment, EAW, as we call it, for 7001 and 7025 France Avenue. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. So I'll give a brief presentation and then turn it over to the council for consideration. So the, the public hearing on this one was closed on December 9 at noon. We had 53 comments on Better Together. The unmodified comments are included in your packet. But to kind of summarize, we had a lot of comments in favor and a lot opposed to the project. Those that were in favor were okay with the heightened density. They complimented the affordable housing that's to be within this project or the buy-in, however we, whatever the final outcome is of that. The increase in tax base, the mixture of uses here, additional options for residents. Those not in favor were very much opposed to the heightened density, especially the 24-story tower. They believe that it was overbuilding on the site and they had concerns about traffic. Planning Commission reviewed this at their November meeting, held a public hearing. They are recommending approval. The approval was on a five to two vote. The Planning Commission did add three conditions. One, that the US Bank building meet a 50-foot setback. Two, that the drivelines be reduced to 10 feet, a one-way driveline, 10 feet. And they add additional green space, particularly in the, the park that's just south of the tower. The applicant has addressed two of those, well, really all three. So they have decreased the drive lane, as shown on the screen here, to 20 feet wide, so 10 feet in each direction in the north-south, the north-south interior street. They would like to leave 24 feet on the east-west street. This is where truck traffic comes in. They come in off of the cul-de-sac, move into the indoor, the delivery area, and then they back out. So they'd like to leave the 24 feet there. They have increased green space. Generally, it's, it's about 7% over the site, but in particular within the park area. And that's reflected on this, on this graphic. The, the applicant would like to continue to, where they'd like the, the 50-foot condition removed from the resolution. They would like to maintain as proposed the 40-foot setback, which actually turns into 30 feet with the construction of the right end line, the right end turn lane into the project that would be developed as part of Phase 1. They have increased the green space here. They've shifted the sidewalk a little bit to the east, closer to the building and away from the traffic. In terms of the US Bank building itself, they do comply with the 75% transparency that faces public realm and the building material requirement. So at the last council meeting, questions came up in regard to the overall process and just what is the council, what is the action steps? So just briefly, we're in the first step. That's the request before the city council. As the mayor mentioned, there's two resolutions and an ordinance. The first is a resolution in regard to the EAW. This, Kim Lee Horn was hired on behalf of the city to put together an EAW, an environmental assessment worksheet Ashley Payne presented at our last meeting. She is with us this evening, should the council have any questions. What the Planning Commission and staff are recommending is that the specific action is to declare a negative declaration in the need for an EIS or an environmental impact statement. We believe that the conditions that are outlined in the, the approval resolution that regard, in regard to traffic, the stormwater, can be addressed to mitigate, mitigate those impacts. The second resolution is for preliminary rezoning to PUD, preliminary overall development plan for the entire site, preliminary site plan, plan for the US Bank and a preliminary plat. Also in front of the council this evening is an ordinance. This would be the first reading of an ordinance, and that would establish the PUD zoning district. So the, the ordinance itself would put limitations on height, would allow the up to 24 stories as written, as written in the document here for first reading, and it also establishes setbacks and FAR. Should the council approve the project this evening? The next step is for the applicant to come back for final rezoning. That would be the second reading of that ordinance amendment. There would be a final overall development plan and final site plan for the US Bank, final plat. And it's at that time that we would put together the development agreements, establish the easements over all of the, the public realm space. And there's some existing easements that would need to be vacated. So we would handle all that as part of step two. Step three would be for the remaining three sites. They would need to come back for site plan approval. So that would, that would be public hearings before the Planning Commission and City Council. We would be considering that request based on the ordinance that gets adopted and that overall final development plan. We would be judging that project based on this, the overall development plan. So that's a little bit about the process. This is a project where the city does have complete discretion. This is a rezoning that's requested. So staff has outlined in the staff report options for consideration for the council. So there's, there's an approval resolution and a denial resolution within your packet. So with that, again, Planning Commission is recommending approval on a five to two vote. That is also the staff recommendation. Also want to mention that the, within the resolution, the approving resolution, the applicant would like the council to remove Condition 22, and that is in regard to the 50-foot setback for the bank building. Again, they would like that 30-foot setback, it's actually 40 from existing conditions, but 30 with the, with the, the new driveline. Also want to mention that Mike Spack, who did the traffic study and was also involved in the EAW, is here to answer any questions that you might have in regard to traffic. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council for questions. And the, the full development team is here to answer any questions you might have as well.
I'm here, Jim.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Teague. It's good to have that presentation. And I think before we go into an in-depth conversation, we want to make sure that we cover all the questions that council members have. And then we can have a discussion. And the questions can be prepondered to either staff or to the applicant. And it's good to have them here as well for their questions that are appropriate to them. Anyone care to, if anyone have any questions they wanted to ask staff? Member Staunton?
Yeah, Carrie, if you could go back to slide number seven. I just want to understand this third step. So if they're coming in with future site plan review applications, what, what standard would we apply to that review application?
It would be the overall master plan for the site. So that overall site plan, the development plan, the, the building plans and renderings that they've submitted. So we would be comparing the project versus those plans and the setbacks that are established within the ordinance, the height restrictions that would be established within the ordinance. So it's, it's those, the final overall development plan documents and the ordinance.
So if we wanted to add, if we, if we were to, let's say we get through preliminary approval, we get to final approval, could we have conditions on the final approval that then would become standards that would get applied at that site plan review?
You could. Another way that we could consider, depending on what they are, we could put them within the zoning ordinance document, the PUD ordinance. That might be a place to put additional regulations.
So in, either way, they would become the, the tools by which we would judge the site plan, the actual site plan approval?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yeah, I think Member Brendel spoke. And is that Member Anderson? Member, let's, go ahead, Member Anderson.
Thank you. I just have a question from Mr. Spack. I know he's here somewhere. Are you on live, Mr. Spack?
Here.
Here, darling. Hi. A question about general traffic in the area. We've got a couple of, couple of buildings coming online here in very short order. And I'm just wondering what, if you've considered that general traffic in the area into your traffic study here?
We do increase the background traffic for general area development, but we do not go development by development and go through the intricate level. So we do raise the existing traffic counts up to account for generalized development.
Okay. So, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Other questions? At this point, Member Brendel?
Thank you. So this is a phased project. We've had other phased projects before us in the past. And one that comes to mind is Pentagon. And the Pentagon Village, because of the economy, now is stalled. So here we have another phased project coming in, in a challenging economy. And so I, the, the other example that comes to mind is actually Centennial Lakes. Because the master plan for Centennial Lakes was housing all the way around. And that south end, the last part of Centennial Lakes to be developed was changed to be commercial rather than housing as it was initially approved in the master plan. So now when we look at this master plan, I'll call it, and looking at what could happen over the years that it takes to build out a project of this type, what do we do? What are the assurances? If there's anywhere that I don't want to see, it's a partially, that, that we have a partially done project sitting there, it's in the Southdale District. This is, this is our major commercial district in our city. And so what happens if in 2022 or 2023, the market is less, less attractive for housing and more attractive for commercial? And how does that affect the PUD that would be in place at that time?
Yeah, excellent questions. So it would be an amendment to that overall development plan if they wanted to do a change. For example, the Pentagon Park, where the hotels have fallen through, we've got the approved master plan. We've got the approved master plan for the hotels for that site. We've had a lot of inquiries about that. And what they would have to do, mostly housing proposals, they would have to come back, do an amendment to that existing PUD. So it's a rezoning essentially and an ordinance amendment where you would consider that overall development plan again. It's somewhat similar to the Southdale Office Center Park. The project that we continued at your last meeting. There's an approved PUD with an overall development plan with specific setbacks and heights and building plans that were approved. So we're comparing that project against that approved PUD. So the city has a lot of discretion in approving those. In a sense, you're not entitled that density, that height. We would really judge it based on the underlying zoning again. And are they what they're proposing justified? Using the PUD criteria all over again, design experience guidelines, et cetera.
All right. And the I guess the other question I have, and it's been a question that I've I've been just mulling over in my mind. And member Fisher asked it last time, and that is, what's the magic of 24 stories? And I can't the the answer for me last time didn't match the question. So so that's something I'd like to hear more about is what what is the reason for 24 stories? I think as as I read the 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 comment, the the comments that we've gotten about this plan, height is mentioned in so many of the comments that are critical of this plan. So I'd like to know, what's the magic of 24? Why not 20? Why not 18? What is the magic of 24?
That's probably a question for the applicant. You know, a lot of it has to do with the economics of making the project work. But I think it would be best for the applicant to to answer that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's wait, hold on the applicant for a moment and finish with Director Teague. Director, so Director Teague, as a segue off member Staunton's question, which I thought was a good one, as you think about those three steps, preliminary, final, and then site plan review, what is the most appropriate? If the council were so inclined to approve this project in some form, but wanted to attach conditions, where would it be most appropriate in the process in terms of step one or step two to add those conditions?
Yeah, so in the sequencing, as you're considering tonight, I would recommend that you do the EAW consideration first. Then the second would be the preliminary rezoning. And it's within that resolution, the preliminary resolution, preliminary rezoning resolution. That's where all of the conditions are outlined. So you could make additions or subtractions to that resolution.
But there wouldn't, yeah, but there's no prohibition between if if there were some if there were some conditions that we discovered we wanted to add between preliminary and final, between stage one and stage two, there'd be no prohibition against us adding new conditions at stage two as we go about the process of evaluating approvals on stage three.
It's it's possible. I can't think of an instance where the council has added conditions at final approval. But that's not to say you couldn't do that. Especially if they were to come back at final with some changes to the plans. Can't imagine that would happen, but it's possible.
So the most appropriate place to add conditions would be now at preliminary, if they were so inclined to approve it.
It would.
Some form. Okay.
So just to be clear, my understanding is, you know, as we vote on the the zoning or it's a PUD, we're creating in a way an envelope, a maximum envelope. So if we whatever height we say is the maximum for the tower or for the other buildings or whatever, they can come back and build a less tall building, correct? Without getting our a new approval on that?
That's correct. Yeah, we're essentially setting heights for all three of those lots.
But at the same time, you know, there's going to be some variability possibly with the uses or the configuration of the individual buildings and the different phases. So to to the mayor's point, there may be conditions we don't even know to impose today because something could change in in the actual project that comes to us. And that's where I do think there's got to be some level of flexibility, not not changing course, not going, you know, the other direction. But, you know, there may be a case where a condition will be necessary later.
Yes, that's a good point. So at that that search phase where one of the other three lots or all three at the same time, however it occurs, you have the ability to place additional conditions on those parcels in the future during those site plan reviews.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, one of the one of the confusions I see continuing on here, and confusion maybe isn't the right words, but it's an issue that member Staunton raised with you last time. And that was to have you clarify the interrelationship between the Greater Southdale District Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, and the Southdale Design Principles. Would you would you restate that interrelationship?
Yeah, so the there's the the Comprehensive Plan and within it is the the Southdale Area Plan. That's the the small area or regional plan. The Design Experience Guidelines were not officially made part of the Comprehensive Plan. Rather, it's the tool that we use to potentially as we're considering requests for additional height or additional density. That's the tool that we want to use to provide that justification to for the increase in height or density to get the kind of developments that the task force for the Greater Southdale Area, the types of developments that they were looking for.
So the Design Principles actually, the Design Experience Guidelines actually guide 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 us in this work?
Yes, they help provide that justification for rezonings. Just like that, yeah, that's in front of us this evening for a PUD ordinance. That's the that's the tool that we use to provide that that give-to-get justification.
Okay. All right. Council members, have any further questions? No, otherwise you could go to the applicant to answer the a couple of different issues, I think. The one member Brindle raised and then about height and then there was another one too that may have had some applicability to the applicant. Mr. Carlson, are you on the line?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Hovland and council members. So I'm on the line along with our support team from ESG and Mortenson. So first of all, thank you for the engagement and questions. I'll start on building heights and then pass it off to Neil Reardon at ESG to further answer the questions you may have. When we look at height for the Southdale area, it's not just, hey, what can we try to do with this site to make something tall and great and grand? We take an overall look at the site of which this is six, nearly six acres. So it's a big chunk. By comparison, the Bauer site is one and a quarter acres. So with a six-acre site, we're really able to design the super block. We're able to design the grid. We're able to create public streets, create that the 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 future innovation and aspiration for the Southdale District and really build upon the connectivity that we heard in the previous discussion points around sidewalks within neighborhoods. So we start with there and then how do we do this? And then it's really, okay, how do we just provide the best street level and pedestrian experience that incorporates that give-to-get between citizens, community and development team? And what that does, it leads to a building that that creates this height and creates this grand feeling on this Class A site. And so when we back into it to say, where do we want to be on a density level? Where do we want to do with different uses? We come up with the idea that this tower could be should be high and we could get some maximum efficiency out of these floor plates. So by creating this 24-story tower, we're able to create that better connectivity at the street level. We're able to make these connections happen. We're able to do an office and retail commercial building. We're able to do the bank branch in the bank of the future. And we're able to do a workforce market rate senior project apartment building here. So it really enables us to push the public communities downward, keep that street level engaged because we have a smaller footprint. So instead of having a bigger blockier footprint, like for example, two 12-story buildings, two 14-story buildings that creates a narrower, more canyon-like effect at the pedestrian level. Doing this allows us to keep our podium lower, our footprint smaller and go more vertical. So with that, Neil, I don't know if you've got anything to add from an architectural perspective, but that's where the height comes from.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Yeah, I'll just add a few things, Mayor Hovland, council members. You know, the the floor plate efficiency does does matter. And council member Brindle, to your question, to your kind of direct question, why 24 stories? So there is an operational efficiency at the number of units that we need to make this project work. And what that does is that coupled with a an efficiency of a floor plate that's around, you know, in the area of 14,000 square feet, that that coupled with with it, really the number of units that is, really drives that 24-story decision. Of course, all of that is supplementing all of these other things we we knew we had to do well on urban design, the small grid block pattern, following those experienced design guidelines. The 24-story, you know, just to reiterate what Ted said, supports all of that in addition to those efficiencies I just mentioned. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. A follow-on to that is the the missing middle and whether missing middle would fit into this project at all. Townhomes wrapping the the senior workforce housing building on the south end, something like that. Is there any place for missing middle in this?
Good evening, council members. Can you is my screen being shared at this point?
Not yet.
It's coming.
Yeah, here it is.
Okay. So to your point, council member Brindle, on the on the tower podium here, we've got units wrapping along 70th and along Ewing. So we can, we've created activation here. And then as we move down to the the southern building, we've got units on along this Ewing here, along the west side. And then along a future 71st Street here on the north side across from the plaza. We've designed and planned and showed ground-level activated units within each of the two projects.
All right, how many units roughly, Ted?
Oh, boy.
I'm just wondering, compared with 200 apartments. I'm just wondering.
I would I would suspect that the ground floor here, council member Brindle, and it would be approximately 10 units.
Okay.
At the ground floor here.
Okay.
Neil, do you happen to? I don't know that we've done a unit stack yet. We've just kind of planned for units on a per square foot per floor basis.
Okay.
Yeah, is the question, how many units are not part of of an upper floor scenario? I guess maybe it'd be helpful to clarify what exactly what the question is.
I guess I'm looking at what I consider to be missing middle housing and that's the townhome sort of walk-up townhome sort of unit that that we think of as missing middle. It is, it's medium to low density as far as the height is concerned. And it's something that appeals to someone in that workforce housing bracket.
Got it. Well, I can I can say that we have a number of units, you know, between probably depending on how you qualify qualifying them as walk-ups. We have, we do have about, you know, five to 10 on in on Site C, that southeast quadrant. And then within the podium itself, there there are not any direct walk-up units, but there are some on levels two, three, four, five. And those constitute a small percentage, you know, 20 to 30 units in the project. With respect to the question on on cost or affordability, I'll maybe send that one back to Ted or or Brett Webb with Mortenson.
Okay.
I'll call on Brent for anything specific affordable related.
All right. I was just, I was just looking at, and I understand that missing middle doesn't mean it's on the ground floor. But I I'm just looking at making sure that we're addressing that because part of what I read is I don't see any missing middle here. And so I wanted to get some clarification that that missing middle is that workforce level and getting more clarification on on that. Then the the other thing that and it's housing related, and that is the mix of rental and for sale. Is it all rental? Is it partially rental and partially for sale? What what are you anticipating?
Right now, we anticipate that it would all be for rent.
Okay. And only because we have so little new for-sale multi-housing. We really don't, we're not seeing it. And and it may be just the economics of what it takes to build for sale versus what it takes to build rental. And I do understand that. But there there is there, there is a demand for for-sale housing and we're just not meeting it. So those are, let's see. Just understand, I mean, the the growth in Edina, and this is actually my last time in in this chair. So this is my chance to to ask some of these questions that as I look at the comp plan, I'm reminded of the Maxfield Research that project that we had done on on the future of and the the, I guess, forecast for housing in Edina. In the next 20 years, 6,000 new units coming online in Edina. That's enormous. I understand that's 20 years, but that's a lot in 20 years. We haven't had, I don't know, have we had 3,000 units in the last 10 years? I don't know. It's maybe close, but I think I think 3,000 in 10 years is a lot for what we've seen. So when I look at that amount of growth and what it's going to mean and where that growth is going to be, density is going to be in our largest commercial area, and that's the Southdale area. I think we'll see some density dispersed around other parts of Edina. But I think I, as I, as I read that paragraph, I'm just kind of back on my heels going, wow, that is going to be a big change for the whole city, but certainly for the south, for the Southdale area. And I think that with this project, you are bringing in that change. We've got the Weston, we've got the Bauer, we've got the Millennium almost complete, the Aria, the the Onyx. And and they're all beautiful buildings filled with One Southdale Place, 71 France. And that, as I reflect on that, that is all in the last not even 10 years. It's less than 10 years that that all has happened. So so when I look at this, it's it's amazing to me how much we've done and how much we still have to do. So I it's it's far beyond the question I I actually started to ask, but I just, it kind of, it it amazes me. Okay, so my final Okay. So my final question is, so we talked about icy streets on 70th Street caused by the shadow in wintertime when the sun is to the south. And as I read the comments on some of the documents that were provided, it's acknowledged that that question was asked, but I don't see a resolution for that. What can be done about the, the icy streets caused by the shadowing on 70th Street?
Thank you, Councilmember Brindle. You know, we as a development team intentionally like kept the tower oriented the way it was and that was primarily based upon feedback from Planning Commission that we believe it, it's less impactful on residents to the west oriented the way that it is. With regards to iciness on the streets is, I believe that the city Director Milner is responsible for the sidewalks along France and 70th. But I will also tell you that as landlords for other projects within Edina, we've got very good snow vendors who live in our local and we are very motivated to have safe sidewalks and streets because liability is not something that we are interested in taking on that anymore than we ever have to. So I can assure you that between the City of Edina's excellent public works and our allergy to any potential liability causing conditions, that we will have very highly maintained sidewalks.
All right.
Councilmember Brindle, I can-
Do you have a follow-up on that?
Well, I would say it's, it's Public Works and Mr. Olson's purview, but they have a lot of challenging areas of town where there's topography that has shading where we have to deal with it. So they're experts in the field and if conditions change because of the development project, they'll just adjust their operations and make sure that the streets are plowed and maintained appropriately.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Did cause any other questions from council members? We try to background ourselves well on this matter. Okay. Maybe we can get into the discussion phase. We've got, you know, Director Teague saying he'd like to deal with some issues in sequence and deal with the EIS matter first. I think that we had information from before that, from our last public hearing on that particular issue. And Kimberly Horn was suggesting that, no, we don't need to do an EAW or EIS. So I, I don't know, at this point in time, I think we're probably ready for some council discussion. And maybe, Member Fisher, would you care to lead off?
Sure. Actually, Kerry, before I do that, could you verify, or maybe the developer could verify it? I was, I noticed in the presentation that I was looking through, I know they, between the Planning Commission and the council, they changed the line width in the North-South Street, I think we're calling it Ewing. Could, could you verify what that building-to-building dimension is?
Neil, would you be able to share your screen?
Yep, I am going to share my screen right now and in the meantime, I, I can speak to that while I bring it up. Okay, it looks like we have it here. So that dimension, not, not to be too exact, is, is 67 feet 6 inches as listed here. It, it does vary in place to place depending on the, on the building frontage. So I would say the range is, is 65 feet to 70 feet to answer that question.
Okay, that, that makes sense that you picked a narrower spot than here because I did the calculations off the drawings and I was getting something much closer to 70 feet, like 69.7, something like that.
Councilmember Fisher, I think you're exactly correct is, is this is probably the, the narrowest condition shown here in section. If you look in, in plan, it probably more consistently is closer to 70 feet as a frontage, building front to building front. Call it right-of-way, although it's not necessarily right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, do you, do you want us to get into the sort of more of our thoughts and comments now? Or are you looking for more questions?
Before, you know, I guess there's a couple of different ways we could do this. We could go through motion by motion and give our thoughts on each particular element of this. But I'm thinking it might be helpful to the overall council if we have this discussion sort of broadly about our respective views on the project and then, then take up those motions individually. I think the only one that could be a potential exception to that would be the first thing that Director Teague asked us to do was to decide whether an environmental impact statement was necessary based on what we've heard. That might be something we could, we could deal with now, but it also could be something that we deal with in the context of, you know, post-discussion from the council members, so.
Okay. I mean, I'd be happy to go and, and what I, if, if that's all right, just sort of go through my thoughts, but you know, not to, I hate to surprise anyone on my last meeting, but I'd like to show some pictures. If I, is it okay if I just share my screen?
Please.
Can you see a picture up on the board?
We can.
So what I wanted to do is just, I mean, we've obviously gotten many, many comments through the public hearing process, through emails, you know, Better Together, all of that. And, you know, many of them, probably 90% are from my neighbors in the Cornelia neighborhood. And I want to make that clear that, because there are a lot of emails that said, well, none of you are from this neighborhood. None of you understand or can appreciate what we have to deal with. And I will say, no, I'm, I'm here every day. I walk it. I drive it. I'm very familiar. In fact, before I lived the 20 years in our house here on Dunham Drive, I lived, when we first moved back from Boston, we lived in the Durham Apartments just on, on Xerxes or York on the other side. So I'm very familiar with this area and it's important to me. So with that context, I wanted to address many of the concerns that my neighbors have because, you know, I'll be done with the council here in a few weeks, but I still need to live with my neighbors. I want them to understand why I would decide what I'm going to decide tonight. And I will tell you right now, I'm in favor of this project and I want to address the reasons. One of the comments that came up was, and Councilmember Brindle just asked it, why not missing middle? Why not missing middle housing here? And the way I look at missing middle is it's, it's the seam. It's the seam that happens between single-family neighborhoods and higher-density neighborhoods. So to give you good examples of it, if you think about the 7200 France or 7200, 7250 project that we belabored for God knows how long, how many versions. But the version we ended up liking had missing middle housing. It had townhomes facing the single-family neighborhood and then it stepped up to the higher density. We've talked about the 6800 project and we've always talked about putting townhomes along Valley View. To me, that's missing middle. It's filling the seams between these changes in density. Whether you could make it work here or not, I mean, I'm not saying it couldn't. It's just the, what the developer's trying to achieve here is difficult with that level of densities. So that's how I look at the missing middle. It's certainly a worthy thing that we should be trying to find places all over the city for. There were emails about watershed and stormwater concerns that, and I just want to direct everyone to, I, I keep this aerial photo of the super block up because it's really important to understand the foundation for most of this Southdale area in this super block format. These massive parking lots and many, and big roofs, right? So no matter how we look at this, there's a significant improvement with the new development in terms of stormwater and, and the watershed impacts. And it starts with the, it starts with the, the underground storage and, and holding of stormwater. But it also is where you don't see it from the ground level, which is up on these rooftops, whether it's green roofs or whether it's the active roofs, that the idea of holding stormwater much longer than, you know, for example, the, the, the bank building is doing today. And that water is shedding off that building onto this parking lot. It's getting salt and oil and it's going into the stormwater pipes and into our creeks and rivers. That's just the way most of the Southdale area is today. This will be an improvement. There were comments about pollution. I'm not sure what that even means, pollution. So the buildings that'll be built, we know with current technology and sustainability and energy efficiency will be light-years different than this building that we're looking at here. And I don't think anyone's saying we should save this building. Let me be clear. No, no one's saying, hey, Mike, leave the bank. But that bank building is a perfect example of a 1970s structure that the windows are just kind of poked wherever they were poked. No one gave thought to where the sun rises and sets and where the heat is gained and where the energy can be lost. That's just common design now. So I don't think we're going to have any more pollution than we have from that one building. We can easily design four city blocks here and be doing better from every aspect. The next one was loss of open space. And I just want to really focus on this aerial photo again. Now, there's a lot of open space here. So I guess if you're looking at it from this perspective, we are going to lose some of that open space. But, but I also want to focus on the quality of the open space and, and how you even use this open space. And so I asked staff to do some calculations. This existing site is 5.7 acres. This green grass, all this green grass area makes up about 22% of that site. The rest is all pavement and building. The new project is 25% streets and sidewalks, 3% this pocket park. And the, all the elements out on France is about 11%. So a total of 36% of this super block is now into open space, which I would argue is all useful open space. Which brings up the next item, which is the traffic concerns. And those, you know, people have serious concerns about the traffic. And I would argue that, and people have talked about the encroachment of buildings on the streets, that there's no setbacks, which tells me that the development team was pretty successful in dividing up their property into what appears to be city blocks. Because all of us, very quick, if you remember back at Sketch Plan, they had a scheme that had diagonal parking. It looked a little bit more like a parking lot than a street. And we said, we didn't like that. We wanted streets. And they came back and gave us a layout that looks so much, well, they are, they're streets and sidewalks. So we've already forgotten that this is a big private parcel that they can arrange buildings in theory however they want. But they're following the Southdale guidelines would say, break this up into 200-foot blocks. And they've been so successful at that, that people are saying, well, man, you're right up to the streets. Yes, they are. But those streets, those sidewalks are all part of the give. It's our open space we're asking for. It's just in the form of what we consider to be sort of a municipal built-out asset. But it's not. It's being privately provided. And, and I think it's just important to keep that in mind. And then the other thing about traffic is that if you go back and look at what's happening here, and I talked about that at Sketch Plan, every time you use, go to one of these spaces, you are forced by the super block configuration to go back out to this intersection to France and back. So if you go to the bank and then you want to go get a bagel, you're on France. And then you later are hungry and you want to get over to the, you know, or you want to get over to a store for appliances, you're back on France. We need to change that. And that's what this is all about. All of, in the future, hopefully, and, and I think about, you know, my driving over there when I drive over to stores or to restaurants and my neighbor. Hopefully in the future, we don't need to.
Mike, you might want to restate that last thought because you froze up.
Yeah, I thought I saw a little freezing going on on your screen. I, I, what I'm saying is that even in the neighborhood here, we spend a lot of time driving up and down France Avenue to get from one use to another. The future scenario, and this project starts it, is that the whole network is internalized between France and York. So an entire network, we can move back and forth and do all of our business without going back on France. We are our own worst enemy on France. We're providing a lot of the traffic congestion and we need to let France be that, a little bit more of that through street and get some of that traffic off. And, and that's the, one of the really important elements that, that this project is bringing to the table. The too much density and crowding and the poor pedestrian environment. I really want to make a point of this because, again, I'm surprised at the negative reaction to these streets and the, what the perceived crowding from these buildings. And I get it. And part of it is, when you look at this in the overlay of the Southdale District, everything in the Southdale District is supersized. Everything, the streets, the parking lots, the, it's, they're superstores, they're all big. So it looks like these streets are just tiny little streets and it's going to be horrible and how are we going to get around? The reality is, and this is why I asked for the clarification, this North-South Street, for example, is just short of 70 feet from building face to building face with sidewalks that are approaching 16 feet on each side. And so I started thinking last night, how, what can I compare that to? How can, how can we describe it compared to something we know? And I thought, the area we all seem to like is 50th and France. So again, if this is a 70-foot or just short of a 70-foot street room, that compares to France Avenue at 50th. If you go from R.F. Mohler to the business across the street, that's 68 feet. That's narrower than what we're looking at here. If you look at Market Street where you have Nolan Mainz and the parking lot on the other side, 68 feet, narrower than this. Sunnyside, the new Lorient Apartments to the Convention Grill, 65 feet. France Avenue at 44th, so from the Gear Running Store to the Salon, 65 feet. And the only one I found wider was on West 50th from the front door of the theater to the Steel Fitness across the street. You know how those sidewalks are extra deep? 72 feet, only two feet wider than this. And if you take it one step further and, and look at the East-West Street here, you can see this one is 64 and a half feet. If you put a building where the US Bank is, that's equal to the apartment building, it would be about 64.5. This, where this plaza is, it's 105 feet from building face to building face. So what I want people to understand is when I look at this, I see very generous public space that we all can use, whether we're sitting at a restaurant on an outdoor table or walking through to get to the promenade. This is all cut out of private land and it's, it's going, it's following the guidelines so we can create these environments that we can all enjoy. And I think there is value in that. I do want to address everything we've been hearing and seeing about building heights and shadows because it's important. It's important to my neighbors. It's important to a lot of people. I took this diagram out of the, all of these diagrams, or I just pulled out of the presentations from the packet. But yes, this tower, it looks like they want 285 feet. I don't know if that's the right height or not the right height. You can see how it compares to everything else. But what I do, if you think about it from a shadow perspective, the primary shadow recipient is going to be the Galleria up here. And I don't know, I, I look at the Galleria and I see parking under a building. I see people getting out in the shadows and walking into the store in the shadows. And it's not going to be a game changer over there when those shadows fall. It would be different if we were casting those shadows over a single-family neighborhood where it, you know, forever changes your backyard or something. I think you can handle shadow on streets. It happens all the time. The other thing is, is I was out for a walk the other night looking at, you know, because a lot of my neighbors are talking about, well, I don't want to see these tall buildings. And to me, the inevitability of living in a first ring suburb in an urbanized area is that you're going to see tall buildings? And I think- And I think, uh, when I, so this is at a high point at, in the Cornelia School, um, Sledding Hill. I walk by here almost every day and I look to the south and I clearly see tall buildings. Some are in Bloomington, some are in Edina, uh, they just kind of poke up in the landscape. And then I look to the east over the school, I can see the Guitar Center starting to poke up. I can see the Weston, and I can see just the edge of the water tower here. And in the future, you're gonna see another one poking up right here. And it's just personal preference, some people don't want to see the buildings, I don't mind. I don't think it changes my quality of life. It's a reminder that I live in an urbanized area, for sure. Um, walking a little closer on Lamar Lane, um, you know, is a closer impact, but this is, you know, about as close as you start getting with the single-family homes. And, you know, I, again, um, it's, I think we have to be a little careful, it was already said. The Southdale area, the, you know, it, this is our economic engine. And, and we benefit greatly from living near that economic engine. I have talked to, my, my block has entirely turned over in the last five to six years. And when you ask the new neighbors why they moved here, first answer is they wanted to be close to the Southdale area. They want to be close to restaurants, they want to be close to shops. And, and with that comes the fact that we live close to the economic engine. And there are some of those things we have to deal with. One other item I wanted to mention, we had comments about the school district. Am I back?
You're back, Mike. All right.
So I wanted to talk about the school crowding issues and school district impacts. So I talked to the superintendent this morning. As a follow-up, we, we meet, I want to be clear, we meet with the, some school board members and a small group of council members have tried to meet every quarter to talk about these issues. Now, we haven't been meeting since the pandemic, but, um, I wanted to address this issue of, are we really crowding our schools? We, and and for those of you that are in following some of my, some of what I've talked about the last four years, I track this, I track the school enrollment. And we are pretty much flat for the, if you go back to 10 years ago, we, we've gained 0.6% of our student population, we are flat. And the only reason we're flat is that we've increased our open enrollment by nearly 20%. We literally have gone backwards 5.5% in Edina resident students in our school district. If you talk to the school district folks, they would say, enrollment, more students are good. And what struck me, and it's a counterintuitive element here, is that, um, the superintendent made a comment that, that really made sense. He said, based on state funding, for every 10 new students, and this is just roughly speaking, don't challenge the math. Let's say you get 10 new students in your district, that's the, you get enough funding from the state that you could essentially hire a new teacher. And theoretically, if you were to hire that new teacher, they're not gonna teach 10 students. You're gonna take those students out of other classrooms, thereby making your class sizes smaller. So the counterintuitive thing to understand is more students means smaller class sizes. And that was a, a wake-up call for me and something that we have to not just assume that new development is making our class sizes bigger. Um, so that's it for the, the component about responding to my neighbors and others that have these concerns. I hope that people understand, I have given this a ton of thought. I care deeply about what happens here, what happens to this neighborhood. I love living in this neighborhood and I want it to be a great neighborhood, and it is, and it will be. Um, I'm gonna, I have, uh, Mayor, I have some ideas for conditions or concerns, and I don't know if you want me to hit those now or let everyone else give their comments and then come back to that.
Why don't we come back to those, uh, ideas on some conditions and let others uh, give their preliminary thoughts here and maybe either a member Brindle or a member Anderson.
I'm gonna see if I can unshare this somehow. Someone know how I can do that? It was sure easy sharing, now I can't unshare.
Mike, look at the top part of your screen, if you hover towards the top, all of a sudden the menu will come down.
Ah, there it is, thank you. Sorry about that.
Um, well, I can jump in unless Member Anderson wants to.
Member Anderson?
Okay. Um, I guess just a couple of things for me. Uh, in addition to what I talked about earlier. Uh, thank you, uh, Member Fisher, for your comments about the school district. I had put together some information as well, but I can't top what you just provided, so thank you. Um, it is a concern and I did hear from residents about their concern about, um, about class sizes and, um, and their concern for their own children. And, uh, and how more students might change the experience their kids have at school. Um, so, um, another thing that, I don't know that we've spent a lot of talk, time talking about the, the, um, the 71st Street and the Ewing that go through this development. And how that aligns with what we've been talking about um, is the, the smaller street that moves along the east side of France and the west side of France. That as redevelopment takes place, these smaller streets like Ewing um, provide, and and hopefully Ewing is going to continue as changes take place in the decades to come, that Ewing will continue south. Um, depending upon what happens and and how the Galleria changes, who knows? It could go under the Galleria and go to the north. I have no idea. But, but just looking at what we had hoped for at the 727250, it included that, um, that street between the, between the townhomes and the apartment buildings in that development. So we are, we're very, um, uh, happily anticipating those, uh, minor arterials coming along France to relieve France. So I, I would consider France to be the through street and the smaller streets to be the local streets, if you will, of getting to those local destinations. So as I look at this proposal and we've had, we've had a good amount of time to really think about and, and live with the possibility of this amount of density. Um, density is part of moving forward for Edina. If, if we are gonna grow to the, to the degree that the, um, the housing research, uh, firm suggested that we are going to grow, uh, density is gonna happen. And as I mentioned before, um, the target areas for density are gonna be those commercial districts we have in our city. This being the primary commercial district. Um, it is the, and, and density will drive that continued growth of transit to our city. Transit doesn't come where density doesn't exist. Density has to exist in order for the transit system to build. And, and I think that transit system, uh, will continue to be what we have today. Hopefully, we will see some nice connections to Light Rail because while it doesn't come through Edina, it certainly comes close to Edina. And we need to get our people from where they are to Light Rail when that is a reality. Which is, you know, it's, it's coming, it's, it's really, I'm so excited. Um, and have been excited to be part of that project, to see it happen. Um, let's see. And then micro-transit as well. I, you know, aspects of micro-transit are in use today, whether they are the Zipcar, the Our Car, or Uber and Lyft. Um, and then other aspects of micro-transit that we don't even have yet. But, um, but looking back, um, the, the first conversation about, about this much height that, that I had was with regard to the Estelle project that was proposed a while ago for the Bremmer Bank Site, the BMO Harris Bank Site. And at the time, I told the developers that height belongs in the corridor between France and York. That west of France, it's a transition area between the height and density of the Southdale area into the neighborhood. And so those wards are out there. And, uh, and so I'm part of the message that, that the residents of the, of the area listen to, that height, um, height was a concern with the Estelle project because of where it was positioned. Height is where it belongs in this location. And, um, it is between France and York. And, um, and height can reasonably be considered here um, because it has room to transition to the west, it has room to transition to the east. And, um, and along with height comes the need to consider the transition to adjacent buildings and adjacent land uses and the breathing room. And I, I couldn't have described it better than Mike Fisher just did. In how the buildings within the development um, interact with one another and how they will interact with the buildings that currently exist that will be adjacent to this development, should it go forward. Um, but that breathing room, um, and noting that we have that, that amount and we can relate to that 70 feet, to that 100 feet, to that 65 feet in spaces that we are familiar with. So, um, I, I'm, I'm very excited. I know that there are people I know very well who are very critical of this project. Um, but there are people I know very well who are very excited about this project as well. So, um, I think it is where it needs to be. It provides, I think, some of the things that, um, that we were hoping we would see as a result of the Southdale District, um, uh, guidelines. And, uh, and I, I really want to thank the design team for taking those guidelines to heart. And, uh, as the, um, as the years go by and hopefully this multi-phase development gets to occur in the timetable they've, they've set out. Um, I look forward to having something really cool at this location.
Thank you, Member Brindle. No, Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you're welcome.
I, I, uh, I don't really have any, any, um, conflicts with the, the thought patterns that I've heard from, uh, from Member Fisher, Mr. the, Member Brindle. I, you know, there, there, there's no question that this corner, this area is gonna be a significant development. Um, and I, and I think it's really just kind of a matter of what. So, you know, I, I, like my colleagues, I've given a lot of thought to this and I, I guess first, first things first, I think the design team has architectural elements in this proposal, which are very interesting and forward-looking. And there's so much to, to admire. Um, there's also a lot to engage in the, in the whole, in the application and the, the process that we've gone through with it. And, and I, I, I do want to touch on public response. It's, it's been discussed earlier, I want to touch on it because it's critical. Um, the big thing that jumps out at me about public response here is that in both public hearings, planning commission and council, only one call was received. And we received inquiries and comments on that. And I think it's, we just have to recognize that due to the limitations of virtual meetings and the length of public hearings, like this, this isn't a public hearing, but it'll be lengthy one. In this case, it leaves that level of communication can't inform the council. That's kind of makes me, we had a good report, I think, uh, on, uh, together, uh, it was clear. Uh, I counted the emails that have come in. Um, and, and they weren't tremendous numbers as they may have been in the past, uh, although they weren't of the cut and paste variety. I saw 70 opposed and eight in support, and they went kind of back and forth on that. The thing that, that has jumped out at me, um, is in the, in the presentations as they've come forward, the different pieces, um, is the, the, the concept of fluidity and flexibility, which is understandable. Because we live in times and work in times where we have an uncertain state of our economy and shifting business models. At, at the same time, that fluidity, for me, has created, it's a bit of a moving target. So I don't fully understand exactly what we're seeing. I, I appreciate the analysis of the project that we're viewing tonight, but um, a case in point is proposed 110 units of workforce housing. The applicant's been consistent in assuring that the proposed housing elements will be in compliance with our affordable housing policy, but in a manner to be determined. I don't doubt that, I'm certain that'll be the case, uh, because it would be required. On December 1st, questions arose as to whether there would actually be affordable housing or market rate, and I'm also hearing senior housing, so we, we just, we don't know for sure. And, and of course, that's the question, that's the fluidity and flexibility that the applicant's seeking. That brings me to timing. And what we recognize is, is that the COVID-19 pandemic has dramatically altered work patterns and it's clear that the movement and normalization of remote work is underway. It's anticipated in almost all business publications that I read that many of these patterns become permanent and that clearly alters occupancy and leasing of office space. Parallel to this has been the effect on brick and mortar retail. We had a, a notable, high-profile resident, uh, who cites numerous release signs on France. And we, we've seen the vacancies at 50th and France. It's occurring right now in real time. We don't know what the correction pattern is. But, but we do see that a shift in buying patterns is underway without considering the reduced buying power in the economy. That's, that's, that's a concern for me. An economy in which one-third of American hotels face potential bankruptcy, which is why we are lingering there on Pentagon North. In October, US Airlines carried 62% fewer passengers in the same month last year. So it seems to me that it's gonna be the next year to two years that determine whether commerce will, we, uh, can return to more normal patterns and far what those patterns look like. So I, I, I've asked specific questions of the applicant relative to unit mix. I, I don't have any clarity on that at this time. But I'm gonna assume that on track day, the proposed 24-story tower, that it's a four to five-star price point. Each council member has a very current, comprehensive, multifamily, sub-market report compiled by CoStar. That's the leading commercial real estate data source. That report places City Edina's overall vacancy rate at 6.5%. It's a little, it's higher than Minneapolis at this time, but more importantly, it's 10% in the four to five-star range. Uh, it's, it's, when you have vacancies above 5% and the apartment business, I always solve for 3% vacancies. 5% is kind of an equilibrium, above 5 becomes difficult. But they're at, at 10% in the four to five-star range and the same report indicates that in the second quarter of 2021, the Bauer and the Millennium began delivery of over 400 units. And the projection there, based on current rates of consumption, is it takes our vacancy rate to 26%. The Maxfield Housing Analysis indicates oversupply of these high-end market-rate units. And like Member Brindle, I recognize that, uh, they're pointing to the missing middle and more affordable housing, more affordable housing units. Um, we, we touched on traffic concerns. So what we know is that the spec, traffic study indicates that 70th and France will be a hotspot. But the development report projected as essentially congested. Nearby residents are concerned, Member Fisher touched on this. Nearby residents are concerned about traffic increase through neighborhoods. In normal traffic patterns, we have congestion at 50th and France. And I look at potentially at 70th and France. I know that there are workarounds. I know that there are workarounds. We can introduce a turn lane, we can create some, a little more space on 70th, but our own development report suggests that that can impede transit into the future. So I, I've become concerned that less available parking combined with traffic congestion simply discourages the commercial zone as a destination. As we transition to electric vehicles over the next few years, I don't think that that necessarily means fewer vehicles, just different fuel, which would be a blessing. On the rezoning request, we've read the former planning commissioner who's addressed the rezoning request as requiring a comp plan amendment, and goes on to state that dwelling units per acre aren't determined, say, by 5.72, but in fact, on the track in which they're built, and not the overall site, because the overall site will be used for purposes other than, other than, than residential. The other points out that public roadways on site are not a permitted use. Of course, that's under current zoning. So if rezoning is granted, then you could potentially do that. Going to the height of the proposed tower and its proximity to the Cornelia neighborhood. It's already been stated that many residents express deep concerns about overwhelming their neighborhood. We've heard various opinions on height and density in the past and already tonight. The, the underlying drive to put a building of this nature on this site is to maximize return. We've heard that stated in a little different way earlier tonight, but anybody familiar with the development business understands that the value of any given site is determined by what's allowed to be built. If rezoned, then you got a whole lot. If not, we live with eight stories on that site. I've asked the applicant if the project will require taxpayer support and the form of tax increment financing. The answer at the plan review and at the neighborhood meeting was that they were open to all types of financing. However, the economic development report states that the developer inquired about the possibility of public financing resources to supplement private equity and debt necessary to move forward. So I take that as a yes. Yeah, and Mayor, Member Brindle mentioned this earlier. We have two TIF districts created for projects which haven't occurred. Another just came off the books with no return to the city. So I, I think we have to really kind of consider whether that's going to be the fix. Are we, are we going to have that approach, continue to employ that approach, at least in a wide measure, to gain the intended results? We, we know what we're looking for. So I, I can't support a rezoning on that site tonight from P C three, P C D three to P U D, because the bank can build a new building at any time by applying to do so. It's permitted use under our current zoning. Economic circumstances and emerging, and emerging high vacancy rates combined with changing consumer and work padding, patterns are a dangerous mix. There's no need to rush to a decision on this site tonight. If a new bank is built there, then it can be reconsidered. It needs time, the economy needs time, the city needs time to carry out, to see what direction we're going here, to determine the rest of the use of the site, incorporating, I believe, many of the elements that we've seen presented and are currently on the table. The taxpayer can't be asked to subsidize what can be a risky development. The, the primary benefit from that, if there's no public realm benefit beyond the development itself, is that the tax base can be enlarged. But, but if there's a big TIF district in place, then the real gain from that's deferred for the duration of TIF district, which can be ten to 20 years. And, and very important to, to me at least, as we create this large population zone, and what we're doing there is creating an, an urban enclave in a suburban context. So with these hundreds of units going in and at that height, we're in need of fire station number two to provide emergency response to a rapidly increasing population in the Southdale District, and that has to be a priority as we consider projects like that. We, we have to get off the ground. So thank you for all this time. I wanted to be specific, and I wanted to be as thorough as I can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, Member Staunton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues for the thoughtful comments. I, I wanted to touch on something that Member Anderson mentioned with a former planning commissioner's, um, uh, written comments to us, and I, I just want to get the, the, the base, the foundation of our consideration squared away. You know, one of the things earlier tonight, we, we thanked Member Fisher and, and Member Brindle for their service, and this is their last formal meeting. The Member Fisher and I worked together back in 2008 on the Comprehensive Plan as members of the Planning Commission at the time. And one of the things that the 2008 Comprehensive Plan did was it identified these potential areas of change, or areas of potential change within, and it was identifying those places where we anticipated there would be new development. So we're, it was places like the Greater Southdale area, this kind of place where you could see that the existing built form, the existing uses were tired and were going to need to redevelop. And fair enough, over the next 10 years after that 2008 Comprehensive Plan, that started to happen, and there was pressure to make that happen. And we saw a lot of development proposals before we had really even figured out how we were going to manage that change. And in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, we said, what we need to do is these small area plans so that we can guide the future development of these areas. And in 2015, shortly after I started on the council, in March of 2015, we assembled a group that ultimately worked three years to create the Greater Southdale District Plan and the Design Experience Guidelines. In December of 2018, we adopted that, that Greater Southdale District Plan as part of the Comprehensive Plan. And the Greater District, Greater Southdale District Plan mentioned in it, prominently in the implementation phase, that the Design Experience Guidelines were the document that was going to be used to implement that plan's efforts. So that brings us to, to March of 2019, when we adopted the Design Experience Guidelines, and now we have a tool. And so I want to be really clear that there is not a change to the Comprehensive Plan here. We have already changed the Comprehensive Plan. And what we did in changing the Comprehensive Plan was adopt some tools that put us in a position to decide whether it could grant rezoning requests like this one. And so when I look at this proposal, I think a lot about how does it fit with Design Experience Guidelines? And I think it does quite well. I think Mick Johnson's letters that he has sent us or memos that he has provided outline that. You know, one of the, his most recent ones said, "The most important factor in achieving the goal, goals of the Design Experience Guidelines is how the proposed building meets the setbacks and stepbacks described within the document, which were devised to provide the highest quality of public realm experience." I think, you know, what you're hearing in terms of positive comments tonight is a recognition that the planning, that the, the developer, the applicant here has done a nice job of meeting those Design Experience Guidelines. So as I look through this, I want to look with this standard in mind in deciding whether we're going to approve it or not. And I recognize Director Teague earlier tonight talked about this three-stage process, and there are a number of things that we need to make sure get done before we, before we kind of proceed. And there are some things that are a concern to me. One, Member Anderson mentioned the affordable housing component. It seems very fluid. I want to understand how that's going to work and make sure that that complies with our, with our targets. I will say, from a housing strategy perspective, we did recently receive the report of the Housing Strategy Task Force. And one of the takeaways for me in that whole report was that in the grand scheme of things, even outside the city of Edina, and if you take the region, one of the issues we have with affordability is a lack of supply. And in part, we've restricted that supply artificially by single-family zoning. I don't think anybody in Edina is suggesting we get rid of our single-family zoning, but we do have some opportunities in places like the Greater Southdale District where we can add some supply that in the grand scheme will contribute to bringing affordability. Materials, finishes, I think those are important to get squared away, and I'd like to see us make sure that we're not letting go of that. We have, we still have to make those decisions. Let me talk a little bit about the bank parcel. It is the one part of this that doesn't really comply with the Design Experience Guidelines and the Greater Southdale District Plan. And I want to make sure, to me, if it is as a temporary placeholder, what is necessary to accomplish the rest of the plan, then I find that an acceptable trade-off. If it ends up being the only thing built and not built in accordance with the Design Experience Guidelines by encroaching more than into the 50-foot setback, then I'm not interested. I think, as Member Anderson said, they can build a new building anytime they want if they want to do that. So I want reassurance that we will be building the whole project, not just the bank project. And, and I will say, with the bank project, if we do get all of the rest of the project, there are some reasons why, if they're going to continue with the drive-through facility during the time that they are, during the time that drive-through facilities are still viable, that it makes some sense, because they are giving up the easement on the eastern side of their property so that Ewing can go all the way through, potentially then to the south eventually. And if they don't push the building forward, they won't have enough parking for that interim Let me talk for just a second about this, the importance, and, and Member Fisher talked about this, the importance of these cross streets, these local streets. They're talked about at great length in the Design Experience Guidelines. And there's really two things that are accomplished by this. One is that broad network, and Mike, you know, did a great job of illustrating that. But that is designed to take pressure off the traffic. The problem is that we're only doing this one step at a time. And so ultimately, the plan is to have more of these local streets that deal with local traffic and have the path through traffic out on France Avenue. I worry that by setting up these right turns that widen France Avenue either further, we're defeating the purpose of having the local streets. And so I'm concerned about having those right turn lanes, especially the one at 70th, but even at 71st, I'd like to explore ways to avoid that. So I am, I'm a fan of the project because I think it, it begins to start this whole, I'd say, the core of the, the design of the Greater Southdale District Plan and the Design Experience Guidelines was starting to, to create smaller sub-blocks within our superblocks. And this is a terrific project that gets that started. And the question in my mind is just how can we make sure we maintain enough control as we go through these three process steps to make sure we're getting what we need as a community? And that's my overview of, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for those, for those thoughts. I was thinking back to the work we did on Vision Edina and taking a quick look at some of the elements of it. So we were defined when we worked on that Vision Edina, and that's supplemental to the work that Member Staunton was just describing, where a group of residents in our community, some of them from the Cornelia neighborhood, I think many of them, and then business people in our town worked for four years on those Design Experience Guidelines that Member Staunton alluded to. Vision Edina happened over, I think, probably an 18-month period, as we worked on the issue of how to define excellence over the next 20 to 25 years. And I would say that out of that evolved, the work on those Design Experience Guidelines. And Edina was described as a model of a successful, mature, and progressive community that strives to lead a modern and evolving world, a high quality of life while engaging in the future. And so that's, that's where my mind kind of constantly goes here, is what Edina has done in the past, to try to look around the corner, to look to that far horizon, to imagine things that are going to happen, but people can't see them yet. And I think that this project falls into that category. One of Mr. Anderson's concerns was he's worried about the post-pandemic world and what's it going to look like, and how is it going to affect the built environment. In May, I was part of a, a group that heard Richard Florida at the US Comprehensive Mayors, who talked about the issue of preparing cities to recover from the pandemic. And he said, "The worst pandemics have never altered the course of urbanization. The communities will survive and grow again," and he used the Spanish Flu in the late, in the, you know, 1915 to 1920 era as an example of that. "But the worst pandemics have not altered the course of urbanization." So that's a concern that, although I may have had that in, you know, have that as a passing thought, I've been reinforced by what Richard Florida said about that. As to the concern about being, a TIF being potentially necessary and the applicant wouldn't commit to it, you know, here we are, looking at a project that our Planning Commission, our staff, and our architectural field office, which has been our consultant with respect to the design guidelines, is saying that the first project that meets the requirements that were set out in the design guidelines. And, you know, when you, when you use P U D and you do all the things that we want to do, want to have done in that Southdale District, carving up those big blocks, rating these streetrooms, as Member Fisher described, that looks so beautiful in those renderings. There maybe is an obligation on the part of the city to be a participant in some of these things in some way to get what we want. It's not just that, it's a total give on the part of the, on the part of the applicant, but I think it requires some careful thought in terms of, in those situations where the city can achieve what it wants to achieve, might there be a role for the city in that too, in terms of things that might be needed for public realm experience or improvements? And that's what we've always done in the past. The judicious use of TIF in Edina has been very fruitful, and I think we need to look no further than the Southdale District itself and the Southdale Mall to see what the benefits are of a TIF district that was put around an aging regional mall that with the help of the city of Edina was able to re-renovate itself and regenerate itself. In fact, when I first got to be mayor, the most asked question I got was, well, what about Southdale? What are we going to do about Southdale? What's going to happen to Southdale? What's it going to do to our town? What about how rundown everything else is getting around it? Well, that investment that was made by Simon Development when it purchased those prop, that property and others from General Reed, as I recall, led us to create that TIF district around the Southdale Mall and also loaned them $5 million to maximize the remodel. The outcome was more outstanding than we ever thought it could possibly be. We've garnered all kinds of benefit from the establishment of that Southdale TIF district, and we're still seeing the benefits of it and being able to help with affordable housing in the area. And we saw what happens when the 80-pound or the 500-pound gorilla improves its 80-acre piece of property, and that is that every property owner around there gains confidence. And so now here we are with a project that is actually, I think, for the neighborhood, transformational in every way. It's going to take the Southdale District to a whole different level of, of quality in the particular, in the, in the region, particularly in our city. This is something that we've never seen before, and it's an opportunity we should not let pass by. With respect to some of the elements involved, the consternations about parking, I think we've had plenty of advice on the parking issues as I flip through the initial report from our, our staff. The density really isn't even an issue, because we're at 67 dwelling units per acre, and 90 to 150 is allowed under the P C D three, three district, which is what we'd be working from if we kept. working from if we kept the zoning as it is. The height is not in the comp plan, it's not in the design guidelines. I don't know exactly what the right height is, but I do know that the first 60 feet are the critical element for the pedestrian experience. And I see nothing critical of that in the work done by the Architectural Field Office or the Planning Commission or our staff. It's a great experience at the street level to be had and I think we'll benefit greatly from it. And the benefits of density as well, those are social, convenient, economic, and environmental benefits that are attached to density, as Member Brindle said. And we're creating a mixed-use, walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment. And that's essential if you're going to have lively places with lots of amenities, and that's what we'll have. This is the start of that kind of a creation out here. The Village of Southdale, if you will, where I can see over time that becoming a village unto itself, ever greener, ever more sustainable, ever more walkable, ever more livable, where people can walk to work and enjoy life like they've never enjoyed it before. We have to put some faith in the market itself and in these developers that are paying, I would think, a premium price for this land, that they're going to do what they say they're going to do and they're going to do it as quickly as they can. I think the market opportunities are great, the, the financial markets are flush with cash. And I think Member Staunton's making a great point that we just need to make sure that they do what they say they're going to do on a timetable that we can live with. I don't want to see a bank built and nothing else happen there either. And I think we can deal with that if we talk about some of these restrictions. So this work, I would say, doesn't get any easier over time. You know, as long as I've been doing this, we've had articulate people in our community expressing why they do or don't support something. But in, in my opinion, and I've never done this, our job isn't to count noses. Our, our job is to do what's best for the town. And if we look at what the potential adverse impact is to the Cornelia neighborhood from this project occurring, which are the voices that are strongest in opposition, I see no detrimental impact to their neighborhood. I see nothing but benefit, frankly, an increase in property values because they're living close to the Southdale District, as Member Fisher said about his neighbor. So for me, change, you know, I've experienced this many times over the years. Change means disrupting established patterns of life. It's not easy, but it's reality. We're trying to do the best things we can for the city. I think this is a magnificent project that puts us in quite an interesting direction and it's a pivot point for what will happen in the Southdale District in the future. And I'm going to support it as well. I do not personally think that we need that EIS work done, but I would now like to turn to some of the conditions that we talked about. There were some issues that I wrote down around affordable housing, design and materials, the 50-foot setback issue for U.S. Bank, the reassurance that the entire project will be built, and then that right, those right turn lane, lane issues at 70th and 71st. Member Fisher, you had some, you had some concerns that you wanted to express about conditions that would be appropriate to be thinking about adding at this time. Would you care to share those with us, please?
Sure. And, and I don't know if they need to, you know, be full-out conditions or just maybe on the record and, and, and maybe it's even part of the requirements of the design guidelines that just, they have to happen. But one of them is the transparency, you know, right now, the, the design of the office building, and I mentioned this in sketch plans, very transparent. And I know they're at least talking about a tenant that could be a grocer or grocery store or something like that. And I think what we've learned in the past, whether it was CVS, Byerly's, gosh, could name several, where they, they, you know, they put the, the window or whatever on the street like we wanted, but you know, it's, it's a pretty much a failed attempt, right? It's, we want transparency and the opportunity here is great to have, if it's a grocer, to have that vibrancy and activity be visible on France Avenue. And so my, I, I just want to make it very clear that I'm not going to be here when, when, if there's a grocer and someday that's being discussed. I want to make sure that's an important element, that transparency. My understanding, as I talked to Mr. Teague, is that 75% transparency is really built in now to our ordinance, which it hasn't been before. So maybe we don't even have to mention it, they just have to follow it. The, I, I talked to both Councilmember-elect Jackson and Pierce about this because I was really curious how they were feeling about this. And a few comments, in particular from Carolyn, was that, and I thought these were good ideas, that, that we make, you know, they've talked about that on the bank building, you know, if we're going to allow them to encroach in that setback, which I feel like Councilmember Staunton, that that's, that's a price I would pay to get the, the whole development launched with the street grid and everything. But the transparency of that public meeting room is going to be paramount and the activity that happens in there, so following through on that. Furthermore, it's not a free pass for the next-generation building that will be on that site. Whenever that bank building phases out, and it will in terms of what banks need, the next building that comes in there, we have to have somewhere in our record that says, you know, it's not a grandfather, you get this setback, you're back to the street wall that, that we all talk about. The pocket park being publicly accessible is going to be very important, that it not only feels accessible, but it truly is, it's public space in effect. And then, Mayor, you just talked about the turn lanes. I've come to the point where I, I don't like either one of the turn lanes on France going north. I don't like the idea of them, but I've come to the conclusion, talking with staff, that the turn lane on the, at the first street at the mid-block is probably going to be necessary from just a pure safety perspective because if someone's not paying attention and you slow down at mid-block, that's, that's a problem. The one at the intersection, I still don't like it, I don't like it at all. The fact that the county wants to have a turn lane there or that it may help a little bit, it's, the street is so wide with so many lanes at that point. It's an intersection, you know, the right lane is for turning. And so I would like to see a little work done on that so we don't just automatically assume that we're going to widen France even more at those intersections where we need people crossing safely. And I, I want to be clear, this concept of TIF came up a little tonight. Nothing in our, we're not dealing with TIF in any way, right? Because I, I haven't given it one bit of thought, I haven't, I don't believe it's in any of our considerations, so I just want to be clear about that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Member Staunton? You had some conditions you were concerned about.
So I agree with the things that Member Fisher has talked about. I, I also, I would like, I remember when we did the 727250 project, there was a deceleration lane and we had tasked staff with working with the county between the preliminary and the final approval to see what could be done about eliminating that deceleration lane. I would like to add a condition that we would work on that with respect to the 71st and 70th Street turn lanes because I think, I think that is kind, I mean, we already have six lanes across on France Avenue and this is in essence creating a seventh lane. I think, I agree with Member Fisher that it's even worse on, up at 70th Street because now you've got where pedestrians are crossing, you've made it that much further to cross. But I'd like to see us explore eliminating those in both places. I, I agree with Member Fisher's notion about the, the bank not getting grandfathered in and the subsequent use, and there should be some documentation of that. I, I think we need something around the affordable housing because I agree with Member Anderson that that has been very fluid and I get the reason why. But I want to land at a final approval where I understand what the proposed configuration is. And, and I think letting that then drift off into a site plan review is, is not something I want to see. I want to see all of the dimensions of this entire project kind of pulled together at the final stage, at the final approval, so that we're not doing this two-piece meal. So those are the things that come to mind for me, Mr. Mayor. I'm just looking at my notes to see if there's any other.
I think one of the two of you mentioned design and materials.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure whether that, that might be taken care of by what Member Fisher was talking about with respect to the ordinance having this 70% and the, the, you know, transparency and the materials. I, I'd look to Director Teague for guidance as to whether we need that as a separate condition or whether there's standards that are in place that can be enforced.
I was just going to go there. Thanks for that prompt or that segue to Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, members of the council. I believe it is covered in Condition 20 where it says all buildings must comply with City Code Section 36618 regarding building materials and transparency. So as was talked about earlier, we have codified some of those Design Experience Guidelines. That includes the 75% transparency and then building materials at the ground level. So they would, any future consideration of site plans for those sites 1 through 3 would need to comply with those requirements. The U.S. Bank Building does comply as proposed. They are at 75% for the, the building face that faces the public realm, which is just two sides, on the west and the north. They would comply and they do comply with the building materials requirement. If I might just add some of the questions that have come up. So I see this as, in a way, we're approving a form-based code. The ordinance itself would, within the ordinance, it incorporates whatever the final plans that you all approve. So in a way, that's the mass, it's, it's the form of each of these buildings as proposed. So when they come back for final development, you know, there's the footprints, the stepping in. So in a way, we are approving that by reference and that is letter B within the ordinance itself, 2020-17. In response to the requirement for the affordable housing.
Would you restate that, Director Teague? I'm looking at the resolution here. Are you looking at the ordinance?
The ordinance, Ordinance 202017.
Okay.
Approved plans. So whatever plans you would approve at final, they become, you have to comply with those plans in the future. So that's what we would compare in those site plan reviews.
If I can just interrupt there, in the questioning before our comments, there was some discussion about, you know, what if they came back in with a, a shorter tower, for instance? And the question to you was whether that would need a separate approval? And you said, "No." I recall when we did the Bowers, they initially had a 19-story building. When they changed it to 18, we said, "No, you got to come back in because that's different than what was in the PUD ordinance."
Actually, it wasn't the reduction in height that caused them to come back. They increased the number of units within the building. They made the units smaller in size, so they were actually increasing the density. And that's what caused them to come back. But these other buildings, let's say that they come back with a 20-story building. It's still a site plan review, you know, you're, it's still subject to review and approval and any conditions you might require. We could, even at that time, say they only want to build 20 stories. We could amend the ordinance also to take that down to 20 stories at that time. So what do they, yeah.
Thank you.
When you go back through that ordinance change again or that ordinance comment you made?
Yes, so at final approval, we're approving the specific plans that they've submitted. So it's that letter B.
Yeah, B as in boy, okay.
Yep. And then if you go to letter H, we're putting into ordinance that they have to comply with the affordable housing policy. So, and we've outlined, and that, that language is essentially taken from the affordable housing policy. So that's written into ordinance, it's almost like a inclusionary zoning ordinance. It's written right into the, into the standards here within the PUD. That gives us the insurances that the affordable housing will take place, either with the units or the buy-in. And then I, I think to address the issue of future setbacks, I think we could add a condition here, Condition I, that would talk about any future building on Lot 4, that's where the new U.S. Bank would reside, that the setback for that new building needs to meet the 50-foot setback. We can write that in for second reading.
So do you, do you take that Condition 22 in the resolution and modify that by saying the 50-foot setback on France Avenue shall be met except? Or do you, you strike that one and create a new one, a new 22?
In terms of the resolution, if the council desires to allow that setback, you would just strike 22. And then written into the ordinance is where you would address that future setback for the U.S. Bank that would go away. That way, it's in ordinance, if that building is there 50 years, this ordinance would still apply, so future staff would catch that.
That cause any questions, comments?
Yeah, can I go back to the housing piece, the, in the ordinance, item H?
Yes.
So my recollection, and, and Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong here, but my recollection is that the notion of buy-in or, or a purchase or development of off-site affordable units, all of those are kind of, so, they're not, they're not all of our options for the applicant, they're really subject to approval of the council. Is that right?
That is right.
So I think we need to incorporate that into this ordinance so that we're being clear that it's not just up to the applicant to decide. You know, I wouldn't want, I think it's going to be important to have affordable housing at this site. And that's been the representation in this application. And, and I wouldn't want this to, to morph without us having the right to kind of say no.
Yes, so we can work on that for second reading. Perhaps, you know, that last bullet point that talked about other solutions as approved by city council. Maybe I move the approved by city council up into that first sentence. So it's clear that it's subject to your approval for some of the options that, that might happen, but it is subject to council approval.
Member Staunton, what about, would you articulate for me on H? Are you comfortable with the rest of that language, which kind of, which somewhat parrots the affordable housing policy?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with those options being in there, but I want to be clear that it's up to us as to which options are acceptable.
Okay, I'm with you. All right.
How is that be clear with the way H is stated right now?
Well, right now, it says residential housing shall meet the definition of affordable housing in place as of December, including but not limited to. It basically, I read it to permit them to, to do any of those items.
Right, but that's not what you wanted to read.
Right. I, I, I would leave open the possibility of some of those items if we decided in the future, but I want us to be in the position of making that decision, not the applicant.
Right. So, oh, I see. So residential, okay, as, including but not limited to, but what Carrie is saying then is?
He's going to rework, he's going to rework the language to.
Approved by city council, I see. Okay.
Yeah. So normally, you'd be able to either do it on-site, do it somewhere else, or, or buy in. And I think Member Staunton's saying, "That's all fine, I just want the council to be able to decide," which they have to do because his belief is, and I think it's everybody else's belief, that there's value to this project by virtue of having affordable housing on the site.
Yeah, and I think we've gotten a lot of commentary to that effect. And so I don't want this to be different than what people are expecting.
Yep.
Members, Don, can I just jump in for one second here and comment on?
Mr. Kendall, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under H, the, the option that talks about off-site, I think is potentially somewhat difficult for the city to manage and enforce. All the other options, I think, are fairly easy for the city to understand and enforce the city's rights. That, that, that one regarding off-site units, I think, is a little more difficult. So I just want to make the council aware of that potential complication.
Right. And I think all the more reason for us to be in control of the decision-making about what, what option satisfies the requirement.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Because I think, yeah, I think the city attorney is right that, you know, that's going to require other players perhaps potentially. And so we need to make sure that's getting satisfied if that's going to be it. And I'm not even convinced we would entertain that option if it came to it.
Members, what do you think about just providing in H that they do 10% affordable units on site? And then, you know, if they come back and say, gee, I think we're going to have to have a conversation about a buy-in versus doing the affordable units on the site, we have it then. Or would you prefer that flexibility in the language now?
Well. So is the 10%, the 10% is even a summary of the policy, isn't it? I mean, it's really 10% at 50% AMI and 20% at 60% AMI. So, you know, if we were going to change it, I would change it to be, you know, to just take out all of those items and say residential housing on site shall meet the city's affordable housing policy.
Sure.
And I think the policy actually makes it clear that it's up to us as to whether you do the buy-in or not. But I need staff to confirm that for me.
We always encourage the units and we lean on them pretty hard to provide units rather than cash. But in the end, if they, if they want to do the cash-in lieu, then that is, we allow them, we do allow them to make that call.
Well, so then maybe here we don't want, you know, we want to add an extra layer to that. Because I. I want, I don't want to permit that until I've heard a compelling argument as to why we should permit it. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's kind of right. I was wondering whether you'd want to mandate that in H that they have to do the units on site in accordance with what the affordable housing policy requires? And then strike everything else. And if they, if they come back with some argument to the contrary, we deal with it then.
Well, so I guess, you know, rather than rewrite it as we're sitting here, I think that's a, as, as Director Teague said, that's something that can be done between first and second readings.
Yeah. To add to that, though, if you wrote that in, that the affordable housing policy needs to be met with units in place, whether it's the 10% or 20%, that gives you more leverage when they come back. If that's written into the ordinance.
Okay.
Come back when they're ready for the housing approvals, for the site plan approvals. It's written in the code, and if they wanted to change it, it would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Right. Are you crafting language, Members? I can see you thinking.
I'm not.
Okay.
I, I think, I think this is the kind of thing that can be done between first and second readings.
All right. Okay. Very good. What about, Director Teague, do you feel like you've got a, or do you think you've got a good handle on everything here?
Maybe a little more clarification on, on that affordable housing piece. Would you like us to write it in, the mandate that the units be put?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I do have it.
So how do we handle that right turn lane issue at 70th and 71st? The idea was that we were going to explore eliminating the right turn lane.
I remember us using some language on the 727250 project that directed staff to explore that with Hennepin County in the, in between the preliminary and the final. That's the, that's what I'm envisioning here is that there'd be an exploration of that that, you know, pushes to see if we can eliminate those right turns.
Yeah. Okay. You could take a look at that, Director Milner and, and Director Teague, you can figure out some language there. Do you want more clarity around that issue too?
Well, so my recollection of that 7200 France project was the council didn't take action until we came back from the county with a resolution. Director Milner, do you recall that?
I think we can go back and look at those notes. If we need a detail tonight, I can't, I can't recall.
So the right turn lane up towards 70th, that wouldn't trigger until the second and third, whatever the next phases would be. I think the idea was to put that right turn lane in with the construction of the bank at final approval.
Well, so here's, so just to be clear, from my perspective, I, I feel pretty strongly about these right turn lanes, and I think it really spooks a lot of the design pieces to this. And I want, I want to at least have the right to, to say no if we can't get rid of that. And I'm, I'm willing, if I'm persuaded, to say yes even with one of them. But I want to have that condition at the preliminary approval stage so that we don't, so that we have it, we have the ability at the final stage to deal with it if we want to.
Okay.
So if I look at Resolution 2020-124, Condition 12 indicates compliance with the SPAC consulting traffic and parking study recommendations, which would deal with this issue, I think. So what do we want to?
Actually, it doesn't because they're the ones, they, they're recommending the right turn.
Yeah, I know, but the conditions say we have to comply with what they're recommending. So I wonder, I wanted to know if you wanted some exception language in there.
Right. So I think that's probably the place where we put, with the exception of the right turn lanes off of France Avenue, and staff shall work with Hennepin County to, you know, learn to eliminate those right turn lanes.
Yeah, except the right turn lanes recommended at 71st and 70th Streets be what?
On northbound France.
Northbound France be eliminated.
To me, we just have to be a little careful with this one. I agree with where you're going with it, except for this is somewhat out of the developer's hands if it's Hennepin County that's insisting on it or whatever.
Where I was trying to look for that language from the 727250 project about encouraging, you know, so maybe it's saying something to the effect of, you know, except that staff will work with Hennepin County to seek to eliminate the right turn lanes at 71st and at 70th Street.
Well, do you want to, do you want to do it this way? Say that except the right turn lanes recommended at 70th and 71st Streets, northbound on France Avenue, shall not be part of this approval unless otherwise required by Hennepin County? Or is that?
You know, I, I think I, I have a problem with this because I'm not a traffic expert. I'm not a, I'm not a right turn lane expert. And, and the person who is recommended this for safety reasons. And so for, for us to make a change on something that we are not an expert in concerns me a great deal. So I would be comfortable with changing this to something on, to, to study or seek further information about the need for the right turn lanes. But I, I would hesitate to go as far as removing them because we might be creating a situation where that is a place that accidents are easily caused in mid-block.
I think Mr. Spack's on the line. If I remember my question to him at the, hearing a couple of weeks ago, he said that this was, this was not going to be an issue at either location for four to six years. Mr. Spack?
Yes, that's, yes, that's correct. It's at that 2025 full build-out with pre-pandemic congestion numbers. So not anticipating that in the next couple of years.
So maybe we could work around that timeline?
Just to be clear, I understood that the, Mr. Spack, your report talked about congestion, not safety. It was talking about changing the level of service at the 70th and France interchange.
They do go in hand in hand.
All right.
As congestion goes up, safety becomes a heightened concern.
Do you have your recommendations there, Mr. Spack? I've got the transportation review here in front of me from Mr. Cipioni, but I don't have your report. Maybe we can look, we can hear your language and that might help us.
Well, I recommend the addition of a dedicated northbound right turn lane. That, and there's, there's more to it at the intersection. There's a couple bullet points here. Which I can abate him if you'd like me to.
I think that would be helpful for me at least.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that if this isn't an issue for four to six years, or we don't ever return to pre-pandemic levels, what kind of language could be crafted where it gives, it keeps us open as a possibility? But to remember Brindle's point, but it doesn't mandate it as a, as a requirement in this, as a condition right now.
Okay. So the bullet point is modification of the eastbound approach at France Avenue, 70th Street to a left turn through, when shared through, right turn lane should be implemented by the 2025 build scenario. A dedicated northbound right turn lane should also be constructed on France Avenue. Not our most clearly worded, but I think it could be tied to, that should be in place by the 2025 complete build-out scenario. I don't know which complement brought it up, but really half of the generated traffic coming out of this site is a grocery store. And if that supermarket doesn't happen, these improvements would not be needed. So there's, there's a lot of assumptions that go into this.
You were breaking up there, Mr. Spack. I don't know what happened, but I think we got the general gist of what you were talking about.
Okay.
No, you sound good.
Okay. Basically, the, the supermarket is driving the traffic at the intersection. And that was brought up at the last council meeting, that roughly half of the side of the traffic. By the side is that supermarket. And it's, it's a hypothetical assumption. It's an assumption that was given by the developer. But if that changed, that would change our recommendations.
Director Teague, could we give this some thought between now and final?
We, we certainly could. It could be decision on the required as a condition. Decision on the required right turn lanes would be determined at the time of site plan review for future phases.
Now I would just add requiring an update to the transportation study with those site plans.
Members, is that's all a good, acceptable direction?
Yeah.
I think tying it to site plan reviews is important because it, I mean, if we, if we, if it had to be done, then we got to accommodate that in the plan, right?
Right.
So how do you want to deal with that, Members? Are you comfortable with the language that Director Teague just used?
Well, except that it's, you know, it's not conveying the point that I'd just as soon do without them.
Yeah.
Right.
And then I think Member Fisher was thinking the same thing because the widening of France Avenue just runs contrary to the whole notion of the, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Right.
Right. You could add us continuing on from there to state that staff would work with the county to consider eliminating those lanes. You know, some additional language to that effect to.
Right.
Find across.
Yeah, that's, I'd like to see that language. I think that's roughly what we did at 727250.
Okay. And then, so the other issue that Members Stanton raised was the reassurance that the entire project will be built, that we deal with that at final or at site plan? What do we, do we put any condition in now that, that deals with that?
Well, so I don't want the, I, I want to be clear, and maybe Director Teague, you can help us on this. I want to be clear about what is, so each of these, if, let's say we go through, we approve this preliminary, we approve final. And then the bank comes in and wants to do a demo and build the bank. Is there any, what is, what is to prevent the rest of the project from not moving forward? Because we can't signal to the bank at that point, right?
Right. Yep. Yeah. So it would be, could be similar to Pentagon Park. The bank gets built on Lot 1, on Lot 4, but Lots 1, 2, and 3 remain vacant. But to do anything different from the approved plans, they would have to come back for an amendment to the PUD. And the council would have discretion again to say yes or no to that. We'd be considering it under the same PUD standards and design experience guidelines.
So I'm, so I'm sensitive to the fact that we can't make people build stuff once we approve it. But I also don't want this to be just the bank building. Even if it's a long delay and it gets built at some point, that's not, that's contrary to, I mean, the bank to me is. I mean, the bank to me is something we're putting up with to get the rest of it. And I don't want to just get the bank and then not get the rest of it. So how, how do we deal with that?
So if I could, I think
Member Fisher?
I've had similar thoughts, Councilmember Staunton, I, you know, concerns, but when you really break it down, if they were to do that, it would be the most expensive branch bank in the history of branch banks. It would, it's not, it's hard for me to imagine how or why they would ever want to do what you're describing. Cause I've thought through it and I have the same concern. But other than, you know, something really drastically goes wrong in the economy and, and in which case, you know, there are going to be other sites that are going to be on hold for a little bit. I can't see any reason why a developer would intentionally build that tiny little building and leave all the rest of this. All of the real income producing money sitting fallow.
To be clear, I'm not suggesting that as we sit here today, that's what they're intending to do. Clearly they haven't gone through all this just to build a bank on the other side of the line. But, but I want, but I want to make sure it doesn't, you know, I, I also don't want to end up in that spot where they've done the bank and then they can't deliver on the rest of it for whatever reason. And how do we protect ourselves against that?
I, I think the protection is the PUD ordinance itself. And then at final approval, we're getting the easements over
That's a good point.
Over, yeah, the right of way.
We're getting the easements right then. That's a really good point. That, that does help.
All right. So that's something you're comfortable with now, Member Staunton?
Yeah, that, that works for me if we're getting the easements at that time.
Then I want to go back to that Resolution 202124, that Condition 20. All buildings must comply with City Code Section 36-618. Is that, is that language in 36618 comprehensive enough to cover what we wanted to cover here with respect to the, the building materials, the quality of the building materials and transparency? Are we getting stone, glass, metal?
Yes, yes. So we've, we have codified the design experience guidelines in regard to building material transparency. That's 75% transparency at the ground level. So yes.
All right. So we don't have to worry about EFAS or products like that?
Correct. They would need variances if they were to go for something like that.
All right. Back to that affordable housing issue, Member Staunton, are we, are we in a place where that language is sufficient for now?
I think the suggestion was that staff was going to work on it between first and second reading.
All right. They may, they may be able to work with the applicant too. Okay.
We will.
I believe the applicant was looking for more flexibility. The direction that you were giving is to say that the affordable units be put into this project.
Yeah. And I just, all I'm saying is that should be the default. If they want to persuade us to amend it later, then we can amend it later. But I need to hear that argument rather than just give them the discretion to do it now.
You want to hear a, a verbal affirmation of that, Mr. Staunton, from the applicant?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. Then I think, I think we got all of those elements covered that we talked about as additional conditions. Director T, you think you've got language created is sufficient to deal with that 50-foot setback issue for US Bank? That, that we're not going to require that under certain circumstances?
Uh, yes, I, yep, I do.
Okay. All right. Well then let's go in the order that you described. And we've got a Resolution 2020-125, which says it's a resolution making a negative declaration of need regarding an environmental impact statement for the 70, 7001, 7025 France Avenue Development. So is there a motion to that effect that we do not need an environmental impact statement for this project?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Fisher, second by Member Staunton with regard to Resolution 2020-125, uh, which is a resolution making a negative declaration of need regarding an environmental impact statement for the 7,001, 7,025 France Avenue Development. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Miss Tim.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi.
The resolutions approved. And then we're on to Resolution 2020-124, which is the approval of the preliminary rezoning from PCD3 to PUD. Preliminary overall development plan approval, preliminary site plan approval for US Bank and preliminary plat. This requires a roll call, simple majority. We've gone through the conditions and modified those accordingly with those additions to the draft of the Resolution 2020-124. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Brindle with regard to Resolution 2020-124. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi.
Resolution 2020-124 is adopted. And, um, and then we have the first reading of ordinance 2020-17. Bear with me a second while I get that up on the screen. Okay, I've got that. Is there a, um, a motion to, uh, for to approve first reading, uh, grant first reading of ordinance 2020-17 establishing the PUD zoning district?
So moved.
Member Staunton moves?
Second.
Member Brindle seconds. Further discussion? Roll call please, Miss Tim, with respect to first reading of ordinance 2020-17.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi.
The, um, first reading of ordinance 2020-17 is approved. All right. Thank you, everybody. That was some terrific work in that reports and recommendations section of the agenda. Important work, hard work. Commissions, correspondent petitions, anything come in? Um, is Tim or Manager Neil that we need to be aware of?
Uh, I don't think so from, from the staff side.
Okay. Aviation noise update? Member Brindle?
Uh, the Noise Oversight Committee meeting will be meeting, uh, on Wednesday. I've got it here. Wednesday, I think it's January 20th. At 1:30, yeah. Wednesday, January 20th, 1:30. We've been meeting, uh, virtually over the phone since April. So I'm anticipating that's still going to be the case. But, uh, but that's our next meeting.
Okay, good. And do you want to share that other information you have on the MAC with your colleagues? Or do you want to?
Sure. No, I'm, I do, that's fine. Uh, there, there's no secret about it. Um, so Katie Clark Seben has been our District C representative on the, as a, on the, as a commissioner on the Metropolitan Airports Commission, uh, Board of Commissioners. And she did not re-up. By now they've had baby number three. And, uh, new baby together with her, um, increased responsibilities at Cargill is taking more time than, uh, and, and doesn't leave her the time to serve as District C Commissioner. So, uh, the mayor and the city manager both uh, encouraged me to put my application in and, uh, which I did. And, uh, and they both wrote, uh, some very nice letters of recommendation for me. There are nine candidates for that seat. And, uh, it's a governor's appointment. Uh, I, I haven't heard a word. So we'll see, um, we'll see when, uh, when that interview takes place and under what format that interview takes place. Uh, but, um, uh, there are two women and seven men. Uh, I really, I, I don't know any of the other people. But, uh, but we'll see. Um, working on the Noise Oversight Committee, I know uh, a number of the staff members at the MAC. And so, um, they're all kind of thumbs up for me, but they know the other people as well. So, you know, we'll see what happens. But, uh, but I did put my application in. If I'm selected, then I would not be serving on the MAC anymore. I, I, on the NOC, uh, the Noise Oversight Committee. However, if, if I'm not selected, I'll happily serve on the NOC. It's a bunch of great people. And, uh, and there's no, no reason not to, although I need your help in order to do that since I'm leaving this council. So, uh, but anyway, um, we'll see. And, um, but yeah, nobody's heard anything yet. The next meeting of the MAC Board of Commissioners is Tuesday, January 5th.
And if you ended up on, um, all these acronyms, you ended up on the MAC, uh, had to exit the NOC, is there somebody that's would be succeeding you that would represent Edina from some other community? Or would they have to select somebody?
Uh, that would represent Edina?
Yeah, because you represented, you represent about a half a dozen cities as the NOC rep. Right?
Um, yes. So, so there are seven at-large cities. An at-large city is a city where the airport is not directly adjacent to that city. And so the at-large cities are St. Paul, Edina, St. Louis Park, Sunfish Lake, um, cities like that. And there are seven. Um, and so each of these cities has a representative on the NOC. So there are seven at-large representatives. And the, one of us selected by the at-large representatives represents all the at-large cities at the dais. We don't all sit at the dais. One, one at-large city represents all the cities, but every city has a representative. So, um, the, uh, the representatives who sit on the NOC are elected representatives or they are city staff from these cities. And so like Eagan, Mendota Heights, Richfield, Minneapolis, uh, Bloomington, they all have their seats. And they are directly adjacent to the airport. So, uh, so anyway, um, if I am selected for District C, then I give up my NOC seat, then it will be up to our council, uh, and/or our city manager who succeeds me on the NOC.
This is what happens when we don't nail down our NOC representative. She slips away to a higher bidder.
I think the bigger question, I think the bigger question is if she gets the MAC and gives up the NOC, can she still use TikTok?
There you go.
I thought you were going to come up with a knock-knock joke.
It's like these acronyms are nuts.
Your kids are going to be so embarrassed.
Oh, you should hear them. Oh, at the, oh, all the acronyms at those meetings. But anyway, I mean, there's nothing to do right now. We'll see. Uh, the matter of fact, people could continue to submit applications. There's no deadline until the governor chooses someone.
All right. Okay. Why don't you roll right into, no, let's hold you and Mike to the end. Uh, Member Anderson, let's go with the council comments.
Joe, I don't have anything other than for Mary and Mike. Um, so we can, we're coming back to them. Correct?
Yeah, or you could make those comments now. We could let them have the last word.
Well, okay, I, I just want to get in the costume for Member Fisher to say, "Usloega."
I like it.
I've been holding this for four hours. I get a chance. I can't plug it in, but I like the look.
We could be, we could be co-pilots.
Yeah. And I, and in fact, I, I was going to get one of those Kirby Puckett fly deals for Mary. I, just because I thought I gotta, I want to be in character for both of these, uh, but you know, I, I mentioned earlier, Mike, that your, um, insights and clarity are so useful and so helpful. And I, you know, I learn every time you're rolling. And, um, hopefully you'll continue to roll and maybe I can still learn something more. So I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. Um, Mary is, um, and we've talked about this already and, and I don't want to embarrass her other than, you know, I, here's the definition for me of Mary Brindle. Um, you know, I drive through that little intersection of Valley View and Hillary Lane, Braemar Lane, the roundabout is in there over by, uh, by uh, the ballpark. And, um, you know, I, I see Mary walking through there every now and then. And in March or April, I, I, it was probably April. And we were dealing with a, a budget issue. And I think the world was more frightened than today. And I, I, it was so interesting. We were in this budget stability conversation and the city manager was trying to find a way to continue and try to squirrel some money away. And one of the things that he said one night was, you know, I, I, we can, we can get this done. It just may mean that we cut the grass a little bit less and, you know, our weeding is only going to be every now and then. And I was, I was driving through there and I saw right after that, I saw Mary and Ralph weeding in that, in that, in that roundabout. And I thought, here's a person that walks the walk. I mean, she's jumping in and doing whatever she can to make this a better place to live. And I, I, I can't tell you how many people I have told about that as out of admiration for you and your efforts. And I, I wanted to make sure that anybody who was still up would hear that. But more importantly, the people who are attending this meeting right now who know you so well. So, um, you're special. Best of luck.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Member Anderson. Nicely, nicely said. Uh, Member Staunton?
Well, that's well put, Ron. Um, it's, I think it's a reflection, Mary, of your, um, you, you volunteer more than anybody I know and you volunteer not to be somebody, but to do something. And, and you are in every volunteer capacity, you are a doer. And that is, uh, that is what you have done on the council. That's what you've done in Rotary. That's what you've done on the Crime Fund Board. That's what you've done every place I've watched you. And we were lucky to have you for 12 short years on the council. I emphasize the word short there. And, uh, and you'll be missed. And Mike, um, it's, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be difficult for me to continue on without you on the council because I've had you, um, doing this city thing with me for 15 years now. So I wish you, uh, all the best. And, and I bet Lori has finished that bottle of champagne by now and is long since asleep.
I got a text about an hour ago that they gave up on the whole party idea. They had the party. I just have to ask them about it later.
But hopefully there'll be time in the coming days to recreate that moment. So anyway, we're, we're really So, anyway, we're really fortunate to have had you both, and thank you all for your work.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
You, Mike, you won't have to get in the cold car and drive all the way home for that champagne party. You can just walk upstairs.
I hope they left a little cake. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I hope so. We talked about this when we celebrated both Mary and Mike at 5:30 at our work session, and we had all participated in the making of videos for both of them. For Mary, we talked about, everybody recognizes her spirit of volunteerism, and I think of her as one of the greatest volunteers in Edina's history. And she's your favorite everything, as I mentioned earlier, your favorite aunt, your favorite sister. You go over to her house, and you feel like it's where you grew up. And as the oldest of eight kids, she took care of every one of them, took care of her mom, took care of Ralph's mom when they got older, and now she's been taking care of him.
I still take care of my mom.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. And she's been taking care of all of us in Edina all the way through her adult life. So, we all know her, brimming with common sense, thoughtful, thorough, comforting, comfortable, trusted, good to the core, both she and Mike, good to the core. And Mike, one of the greatest public servants we'll ever have, I think. That combination of intellect and the character, it's unsurpassed. And we talked about this before too, but we may have a different audience to listen to some of these things. And as I told you both from being on that call on Monday, with that group of mayors that participated in the design workshop, the mayor, African-American Mayor Vince Williams from Union City, Georgia, who is not only a mayor, but a minister, at the end of our session for about an hour and a half on this reunion of the folks that attended the Design Institute, he said, "I love you all, and there isn't anything you can do about it." We say the same thing to both of you. "We love you both, and there's nothing you can do about it. You'll just have to work with it." And so, thanks for everything you've done for Edina, and thanks for being such great colleagues and friends for us. We'll miss you both.
Thank you very much.
Manager Neil?
I don't, I don't, I do not have a report tonight.
All right. Oh, I will tell you additionally that I did attend a meeting with Dean Phillips, our congressperson, on Monday morning. And they were going to put that bill into the House on Monday afternoon, he and his Tiger Team, they call them. It's that group of problem-solving caucus members from both parties that are there to find common ground and fix problems and solve problems, just like we do at the city council, just like city councils do all across the state. And that bill that was going in at $160 billion in local aid that would be potentially $3 billion for Minnesota, I don't know if there's a trickle-down to local government on that or not, but it's a possibility, and they were talking about it. At least as of the drafting of that bill on Monday, I don't think it had anything in there with respect to reimbursement for lost income as opposed to expenses. So, that was it. They were dealing with food insecurity issues and rental assistance, nutrition issues, healthcare issues, vaccine distribution, and transportation infrastructure is kind of the main topics of the rest of it. So, that's it, that's an update there. We'll just have to stay tuned to see if they can find some common ground between the House and the Senate, and apparently, Mr. Trump would sign the bill if he gets one. And that's it for me as well. And Manager Neil, nothing further? Should we entertain, you know, we kind of hate to let these two go. Is there a motion to adjourn? Maybe we should have Mike and Mary make the motion to adjourn.
Are you going to let us make a comment or two?
Oh, yeah, sir, certainly. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Do we get a final word?
The final word. I did say that, didn't I?
So, Mary is the senior one. I should, we should give her the last word, right?
Let's do that.
So, so, thank you, Mayor. I just want, you know, for the two people that might still be up watching this, I just want to, for the residents of Edina, I want to thank you for your understanding when maybe I didn't vote the way you thought I should on some occasions. You know, I've always tried to listen to all opinions, do my homework, take in the facts, and make the best decision for our community. But I know from experience that only about half of you would be happy with each decision I make. So, by now, I've had to have made everyone angry at least once. But for those of you who voted for me four years ago, I hope you still feel good about your vote. To city staff, and I mean staff across the spectrum, from City Hall to Public Works to Emergency Services, we have incredible, caring professionals. And I've really enjoyed building relationships with our department heads, the opportunity that I had with a ride-along with Officer Davis, spending time in our dispatch center, the fire ops experience. Thing I'll always take away is I'm always going to feel confident and safe in knowing Edina, knowing what I know about our team of professionals here. I want to thank Scott and my fellow council members for making this such an enjoyable experience. And I include Bob Stewart in the two years I worked with him. The thing that I have always loved about this city council, and I hope it's always the tradition of this city council, is that no matter what, no matter how much we disagree on a particular issue, we do it with respect, and we listen, and we learn from each other. And I shared with each one of you what I've learned from you, and I was sincere about it. I won't repeat all that now, but thank you, all of you. I also want to thank my wife and kids, as I did earlier, for all their patience and understanding during these years, you know, all the years I've served on not only this city council, but another city council, planning commissions, committees, but especially these last four years. These are more intense and stressful than all the others combined. And I think you all know what I'm talking about. It's just been that kind of four years. I'm really excited about Carolyn and James coming onto this council. I have great confidence in them moving forward. But that's not going to stop me from giving them a little unsolicited advice right now. So, the first thing I would say is to remember that cities have been in existence for tens of thousands of years, but the modern auto-oriented suburbs that we're familiar with have only been around about 60 or 70 years. And I would consider them still to be in the experimental phase of development. And if it feels like sometimes we don't have a ready-made answer for some of our issues, it's because we don't. We've never been there before. In Edina, we're in the middle of replacing our streets and infrastructure for the first time in our history. And it's pretty evident that the economics of replacing our infrastructure is difficult. So, the million-dollar question to me, is our current density sustainable with the cost of our infrastructure? If any community can figure this out, I think we can. And the reason we can is we have 12% of our community, roughly, that is not large, single-family lots. We have economic engines, like 50th and France, Grandview, Cahill, Pentagon Park, and of course, Southdale. We have to be courageous in allowing those economic engines to grow if we want to maintain our single-family neighborhoods while keeping our tax burden reasonable. Suburbs in general were built with a "me" orientation, and we need to transition to a "we" orientation. And by "me," I mean, single-use zoning, separating neighborhoods by income, keeping them surrounded, are surrounded by private property instead of public way. And you can see from tonight's meeting just how difficult some of these issues can be. Nobody wants the sidewalk in their front yard. Nobody's excited about more people using the park across the street, and nobody wants a new development with more buildings, taller buildings, and more traffic. As council members, we need to remember that our charge is to build a healthy city, not only for today, but for tomorrow. We have to plan for the future, even as our residents are asking us to slow down and keep things familiar. When all else fails, if you're not sure how to vote on any issue, vote in favor of the common good. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fisher. Beautifully done. Beautifully done. Member Brindle, Mary Brindle?
Well, thank you. So, I was asked recently what I'm most proud of during my 12 years on this city council, and I thought that might be a good way to frame my comments that I've been mulling and putting together for a couple of weeks. And I really can't take sole credit for anything, because one person, one person doesn't do, I mean, one person can't do what we can as a group of five. And so, I didn't do any of this alone, but I'm really happy with the body of work that we have accomplished over time to now guide the city forward. And I don't know if I want to cite one particular project or one particular thing, but when I look at what we have put in place to say the pedestrian cyclist safety, the climate action plan that's going to be decided on in 2021, all of these layers that as decisions are made for projects, new developments, redevelopment in the future, are going to be decided on based on these layers that have been put in place in the 12 years that I've been here. So, looking at the affordable housing policy, the getting down here, the water resource management, that's going to be, that's absolutely going to be huge. And the importance of the guidance in that document is going to become a higher and higher priority in the decades to come as when we look at that FEMA floodplain map and we see how many parts of Edina are red. And I've said publicly before that if Edina was being built today, it wouldn't look like it does today. If Edina was built today, it wouldn't look like it does, because the water table is so different today than it was in 1950, 1960, and before that. Country Club was built in 1920. So, the, all the layers of guidance that have been put into place, health in all policies, sustainability in all policies, equity in all policies, and how strong that makes our city going forward, and really, hopefully, how easy it makes decisions for future councils when that guidance is put into place, when those visions are put into place. Not to mention, and I think I did mention, the affordable housing. That's very important. So, in closing, I really want to thank and recognize everybody I've served with at the DIAUS. Scott Haush, Joni Bennett, Josh Sprague, Ann Swenson, Bob Stewart, and the current council of Mike Fisher, Kevin Staunton, Ron Anderson, and the mayor. I appreciate you more than you know. You have made me a much better person. You have added to my skill set enormously as I look at the enormous talent that you, Mike Fisher, have, and you, Kevin Staunton, have in your fields of expertise. And getting to know Ron and his massive expertise in real estate and understanding housing beyond my ability to understand how we got here and what the future holds. Ron has just years and years of experience and understanding, and how he will guide this council going forward with his advice, I think is going to be something to watch. I've learned a lot, and I've been able to maybe enlighten each of you in some ways, but I really appreciate the decorum and the professionalism that we hold each other to on this council. And I don't think it can be, you really can't discount the importance of that. So, my committee assignments, which I have been lucky enough to have, will go to other people. I did make a recommendation to the city manager that Carolyn Jackson be considered to follow me on the 494 Corridor Commission and the 494 Airport to Highway 169 Policy Advisory Committee. That's important. Edina needs a seat, and it, and it, and needs a seat there, and she would be great. I mean, transportation lobbying is part of what she's very skilled at. I've been thrilled and very happy to serve on the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Transit Community Works Committee as Jim's alternate, and it's really been fun to have a front row seat in how land use is going to be repurposed along that light rail line for stations and multi-use developments throughout the, from downtown Minneapolis through the southwest suburbs. And then the Southwest Cable Commission. The workings of the Cable Commission are very interesting, and it doesn't meet very often, but there's a lot of learning that happens there about the politics and the understanding about keeping the internet and programming available to all our residents. And then, the Noise Oversight Committee, which if I'm fortunate enough to be appointed, I will continue as Edina's representative on the NOC. And then we'll see what happens with the MAC District C Commissioner. That could change everything. But, but yeah, and then, the other, the other priority which I've chosen for myself is to really deepen my commitment into anti-racism. And I've been to a number of sessions moderated by some amazing people and learned a lot about myself, but learned a lot about how we got here. And I'm looking forward to continuing that and maybe helping to guide residents in our community in their own search and becoming a stronger and more unified community as a result. So, I humbly thank you all for this great opportunity, and I congratulate Carolyn Jackson and James Pierce as they come to the DIAUS and take their seats. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Well, we'll, we're going to ring you out here with a round of applause. Would the two of you care to make a motion to adjourn?
Sure. I'll make a motion to adjourn the December 15th, 2020 city council meeting. My last.
I will second that motion.
All right. Got a motion to second to adjourn the December 15th, 2020 meeting of the Edina City Council.
I neglected to thank staff and my admiration, absolute admiration, for our public safety personnel and Public Works. They really put their lives on the line to keep us, to keep us safe. And if you could have seen them working, the Public Works folks, 2:00 in the morning, it's 20 below, working on a broken water main by the Creek Valley Water Tower, that was scary to see. So, thank you. I just, I can't thank them enough.
Thank you.
If we hold off for a little bit longer, we can go see them now.
Yeah. We'll get into Wednesday yet, and you
We'll get into Wednesday yet and you guys, uh, you'll be able to say you served one more day. All right, um, we got a motion, uh, and a second for adjournment. Any further discussion around that issue? Roll call please with respect to adjournment.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. We, uh, stand adjourned and it's a historic sort of adjournment. Thank you, everybody, and especially thank you to our departing colleagues.
See you Thursday morning.
You're the best.
Be back at 7:30 Thursday. Goodnight.
See ya.
Everybody.